I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority. City Clerk, can I have the role, please?
Yes. Councilmember Mosher.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns.
Here.
Mayor Vandermark.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland. Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Kalmick.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Casey McKeon.
Please rise if able. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Huntington Beach Police Chaplain James Pike.
Let us pray. Once again, we invoke your aid, O God, not against one another, but toward our common good and toward your own purposes. We pray for the government in our city and for its people, that we might here create more perfect union, we might here establish justice, we might here ensure domestic tranquility. We ask for the kindness of your providence to give us the gifts needed, that we might all enjoy the prosperity and joy that comes with living in Huntington Beach. We ask for all these things in your holy name. Amen.
We're moving on to closed session reports. City Attorney, do you have anything to report from closed session?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to make an announcement. As you all know, there are some changes in the public comments portion of the City Council meeting. It's important to each of my six colleagues and me that people in this community are able to voice their messages to the City Council in a respectful environment. All of your comments are important to us, as we want to hear your messages. Please be respectful of other people's time to speak in personal space. Refrain from interrupting others and provide others with the same treatment you would like for yourself. Tonight, we're introducing a new format of public comments. First, to join the list to speak at public comments, you can create a request to speak form. You can request that as early as 30 minutes before the first meeting. That includes the study session, closed session, and regular session. In order to be called to speak, request to speak forms must be turned in to the Sergeant at Arms or the City Clerk up until the public comment period starts. Request to speak made prior to the meeting will no longer be honored. Second, presentations or AV materials must be submitted to staff no later than 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. This change will be implemented beginning with the April 2 City Council meeting. The email address to submit your presentation materials is huntingtonbeachca.gov. And third, members of the audience and speakers shall not wear or display signs that obstruct the view of other audience members. Signs shall remain with the holder and shall not be placed in adjacent seats or in common areas. This change will also take effect on April 2 City Council meeting. All of this information is available on the City Clerk's webpage and on each agenda. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to awards and presentations, and I would like to invite Officer Legimi to come forward.
My name is Kevin Ling, and I'm an investigator with Automobile Club of Southern California. I just wanted to give some information on the 10-851 award, what exactly it is, and how it's a collaborative program with Automobile Club of Southern California. The award was developed in partnership with the California Highway Patrol to honor officers who have made a significant contribution to the recovery of stolen vehicles and the arrest of suspects. The program has been around since 1979, and for a hundred years, the Auto Club has collaborated -- thank you -- has collaborated with law enforcement agencies to combat auto theft. Your work helps reduce the financial loss incurred by the public because of motor vehicle theft crimes. I'd like to express the gratitude of our members, insureds, and the general motoring public for your valuable contribution.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Pointer. I'm the commander of the Westminster CHP area nearby. I'd like to thank the mayor, Chief Parra, members of the council, and you all for having me here tonight. It's my pleasure to recognize one of Huntington Beach Police Department's finest with the 10-851 award for his outstanding work. The Commissioner of the California Highway Patrol is designated as the statewide coordinator for the Vehicle Ownership Security Program. Through the CHP divisions, we coordinate statewide vehicle theft prevention efforts and provide investigative and technical assistance to our allied agency partners. For those not familiar with the 10-851 awards, 10-851 is the California Vehicle Code section for vehicle theft. The criteria for this award must meet one of the following categories: six separate arrests involving rolling stolen vehicles, or the recovery of 12 vehicles with a minimum of three rolling stolen vehicles, or the development of information which uncovers a theft ring with two or more suspects and at least 10 recovered stolen vehicles. In California, a vehicle is stolen on average every three minutes. This equates to approximately 178,000 vehicles statewide valued at over $1 billion. The latest vehicle theft numbers from 2023 in Orange County alone indicate 8,603 vehicles stolen. Of those, 6,035 were recovered, with an over 70% recovery rate. So, I am honored to be here tonight to award Officer Kevin Legimi with his first 10-851 award and pen. Officer Legimi is receiving his first 10-851 award for recovering six rolling stolen vehicles, an additional six abandoned stolen vehicles, resulting in the arrest of six suspects between the dates of November 4, 2022 through November 4, 2023. Congratulations, sir.
Who's that guy in the back? Doing ears?
(Inaudible)
We really do have a great PD. We're lucky. I'd like to move on to announcement of supplemental communications. Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we do, Mayor. For Council Committee Appointment Announcements, item 10, two email communications received regarding amendment to your 2024 Council Liaison List. For Consent Calendar, item number 13, a memorandum was received from Shannon Levin, Council Policy Analyst, regarding a correction to the recommended action. It's actually just a correction to the number that was typed on there. So, when we move that, it'll be approved as recommended by supplemental communication. In addition, two email communications regarding pending legislation before the state legislature. For item number 14 on the consent calendar, two email communications received regarding proposed three-year professional services contract with PSQ Productions for the annual Independence Day celebration. Consent item 15, two email communications regarding proposed adoption of Resolution Number 2024-8 regarding the number of permits issued for safe and sane fireworks from 15 to 16. For item number 16, a memo was received from Danielle Telles, our interim Human Resources Director, requesting the item be removed from the approval process tonight, so that item will be withdrawn from the agenda. And an email communication regarding the approval of professional services contract with Carl Warren and Company for Liability Claims Administration Services. For administrative items, number 22, a letter was received from Carlos Rubio, President of Teamsters Local 911 on behalf of the Huntington Beach Municipal Teamsters regarding authorization to issue requests for proposals for managed library services by the Huntington Beach Police -- I mean Huntington Beach Public Library System, pardon me. Also, a letter received from Charles Barfield, General Manager of Orange County Employees Association, on behalf of the Huntington Beach Management Employees Organization regarding authorization to issue a request for proposals for managed library services for the Huntington Beach Public Library System. We received 598, we've actually received more, email communications received regarding authorization to issue a request for proposal for managed library services for the Huntington Beach Public Library System. For administrative items, 23, four email communications received regarding the fiscal year 2324 budget update. For ordinances for introduction, item number 24, 100-plus email communications received regarding introduction of proposed ordinance number 4318, adding Chapter 2.66 to the Huntington Beach Municipal Code relating to Community Parent Guardian Review Board for review of procurement of children's library material. And for Councilmember items, number 25, a letter received from Connor Medina, Regional Public Affairs Manager, Orange County Division of the League of California Cities, regarding proposed withdrawal from the League of California Cities. In addition, 16 email communications received regarding the withdrawal from the League of Cities item. And that's it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we certainly do. We have 108 speakers at this time.[831.62][831.62](Applause)
Given the number of speakers, we will be allotting 90 seconds per speaker. At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic included items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or actions on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with the council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@servecity-hb.org. Would you call down the first?
Madam Mayor, I have a point of order before we do that. Because the speaker slip system was changed, and we found out about it effectively, like on social media, I never got a memo from staff on this. I just want clarity from the clerk on -- so the folks, effectively, if you don't have your slip in now, you won't be able to speak at public comment, or you can still come up to speak, you just won't have a slip in?
That's correct, the latter. You'll still be able to speak if you can get up online, but it was meant to create some order in the way that we get people up to the podium and back to their seats. We cannot prohibit anyone from coming to the podium to speak.
Okay.
So, it doesn't deny them the right to speak, we just won't be collecting any sheets after public comments begins.
But you can still, if you show up late after getting your kids fed and come down, you can still speak at the podium? Okay, thank you.
All right. So, I'm going to call the first 10, and please approach the podiums. Barbara Shapiro, Nancy Curtis, Tracy Rizzo, Barbara Richardson, Diane Breenes or Brims, Shirley Detloff, Kathy Ryder, Erin Herrera, Paul Horgan, Flossie Horgan.
First speaker, go ahead.
Oh, I'd like to spotlight some notable new Huntington Beach businesses. First, we've got Tony's Laundromat. Next is Michael's Magic Shop. Taxpayer money goes in and secretly settles large lawsuits. Then, money goes out to large campaign donors. Next, it magically appears at Tony's Laundromat in the form of campaign donations. Amazing. A new women's business, women-owned businesses, Gracie's Ministry of Vice and Virtue. It specializes in dictating to the entire city what constitutes sexual contact.[1048.18][1048.18](Laughter) It's being run by church, her church cohorts, who will censor books. You can also grab a burka at Gracie's Pier Kiosk next to the airport landing strip, and don't forget to mention the discount code, ban books. There is one new business application who wants to privatize the Huntington Beach library system. They have big plans to destroy the soul of our public library, story hour, makerspace, even professional librarians. The question is, will profits end up in Michael G.'s Magic Shop? I [bleep].
Thank you for coming.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Nancy Curtis. I'm a resident here in Huntington Beach, and when the citizens wrote to the City Council regarding the privatization of our library, the response from the City Council was, "The library will remain public, free of charge for visitors, except for the tax dollars that they pay for the library." So, the City Council believes that the library is public because we can enter the building without charge. But the library is not just a building. The essence of the library is its services. If the library services are outsourced to a private for-profit company, the Huntington Beach Library is public by name only. These services include the number of staff, the type of staff, the programs offered, the control of the library collection, and the books ordered, the theater use, the website content, and its development. In short, the library experience. Moreover, privatization could give the City Council more control over the library services depending on the contract they negotiate with the company. Rather than the city making decisions based on a company's marketing strategies and other hypotheticals, which is what was written from the --
(bleep). Thank you for coming. Next speaker.[1218.51][1218.51](Applause)
Barbara Richardson, 51-year resident. Outsourcing our library employees' jobs to a private company is the ultimate betrayal. All employees would suffer substantial pay cuts. Most, if not all, will have to seek jobs elsewhere. The LSS equivalent to our library services assistant makes roughly $16 an hour. Soon, California fast food workers will be making $20 an hour. Fast food workers would be earning more than library services assistants. Our beloved storytellers, who for two years in a row have had their story times chosen as best in Orange County, are library services assistants. How do you expect them to be able to support themselves and their families on $16 an hour? If you vote to outsource our library, the residents will remember and will vote accordingly when it's time for your reelections. They'll also remember in November, when the three candidates you endorse are also running. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. Keep our public library public. Don't let a for-profit company run and ruin it. Why outsource your best resource? Thank you.[1290.28][1290.28](Applause)
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Tracy Rizzo, an employee for the City of Huntington Beach. I am passionate about preserving the integrity and accessibility of our beloved Huntington Beach Library. Outsourcing our library would have severe consequences for our community. It would risk limited access to resources for low-income families, reducing the quality of services, potentially leading to a loss of local control over the library's collection and programming. I believe that a public library, as a cornerstone of our community, provide an equal access to knowledge and resources for all. It is a place where children can learn and grow, students can study or research, where adults can expand their horizons and pursue lifelong learning. Outsourcing would put all this at risk. It would profit over community needs, leading to a decline in the quality services and resources. Our library is a vital resource that must be protected and preserved for future generations. Thank you.[1364.96][1364.96](Applause)
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Erin Herrera. I am also an employee for the City of Huntington Beach Public Libraries. I work at the Oakview Branch mainly, and I come here mainly with concerns of a public servant. I am concerned with the privatization of our library for several reasons. Mainly, the first reason, we're public servants. If we outsource our library to a private for-profit company, they are not answerable to the public. They control the programming, the collection, which will not be curated, and service times. You will see cutbacks everywhere. And this is sort of sold as cost-cutting, cost-saving. It's cutting corners, and I don't want to see that for our library system. I have worked at the Oakview Branch Library for several years now, and the community has come to depend on a lot of the services there: homework club, citizenship classes, English classes, even chess clubs. I strongly oppose the privatization of our library system. We have a uniquely American institution here, a great pearl which you are going to cast before the swine of privatization. Thank you.[1459.21][1459.21](Applause)
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Shirley Detloff, former mayor, and I'm here to protest against privatizing our public libraries. Our library is the very heart of this city, and it stands for so much and means so much to the citizens of this community. Now you want it in the hands of a private company with no history or knowledge of how important the library is to our citizens. You come tonight with a proposal that would allow you to have a private company which also has to answer to its board of directors and the profits they make as a company. I find it interesting that you have also been speaking with a company that does just this. Meetings held without the public being informed are part of the discussion. Also, one important element appears to be missing, the voice of our well-educated staff. If you say this new proposal is to determine the cost savings, I'm sure you had the same information from the people that you have been speaking with. Now it appears that you want to give the appearance of following the rules, so once again, with the budget crisis ahead, we are spending money on something the public does not want. Stop this, but if you must, remember you have a well-qualified staff and the voice of the community that is not behind this proposal. Thank you.[1543.46][1543.46](Applause)
Thank you. Next speaker.
A Huntington Beach voter and homeowner for 39 years. Protect HB while disappointed in the election results, we are proud of our efforts to engage HB citizens to come out and vote in the March primary. Currently, the HB conservative-minded voters outnumber the progressive-minded voters for 14 points, and on Measure A, we close that gap to less than seven. Smart folks on both sides of the political spectrum saw through the poison pills in Measure C, and together, we defeated that measure. We engaged citizens who admittedly stated that they had never paid any attention to local politics. Guess what? They answered our call to action by donating, writing postcards, canvassing, calling voters, and even standing on street corners. And going forward, please know we have hundreds of volunteers who are ready to continue to hold our elected officials accountable. Protect HB is a grassroots coalition of concerned citizens who are registered Republicans, independents, and Democrats. And I am very proud to be associated with this group and to stand as one of their leaders. Be aware, we are not going away.[1623.71][1623.71](Applause)
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Horgan. I'm a Huntington Beach resident, and I'm talking, I want to talk about the Agenda Item 24197, which I oppose. Regarding that Agenda Item, I noted a quote in, or I saw a quote in the Voice of OC the other day, which referenced a quote attributable to the mayor, which read as follows: "The city has explored turning over library management to a private company in alignment with the city's mission to provide exceptional service."[1661.15][1661.15](Laughter) I've been a patron of the library for decades, and many of the people in this audience have been as well, and I guarantee you that virtually everyone will say, "Our library is exceptional as it stands."[1678.01][1678.01](Applause) In any event, the mayor and maybe some of the council members have a disagreement with the way the library is run. That seems to be what the mayor, with respect, has said, and I'm here tonight to ask the mayor and any other council member who agrees with her to identify during the course of the process, what are the deficiencies of the Huntington Beach Public Library? And secondly, how would a private company, as proposed, remedy those deficiencies? I'd like to hear that. I think everybody else would, too.[1715.53][1715.53](Applause)
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Diane Brenness. I'm a seven-year employee of the City of Huntington Beach, employed at the Huntington Beach Public Library. I oppose Agenda Item 24197. I joined the Huntington Beach Library after over 30 years working as a corporate librarian, of which 28 years were spent working for McDonnell Douglas and Boeing, right here in Huntington Beach. As a research librarian, I'm often asked, "What is the value of public library services?" Our public library is not merely housing books. It's a gateway of knowledge, exploration, and particularly important in our community, a bastion of equity. Individuals from all walks of life find resources to educate themselves, to technology to bridge the digital divide, and find a safe haven for intellectual growth. Why would you entrust all of that and the Huntington Beach tax dollars that pay for the library budget to a limited liability company focusing on profitability by reducing these services, resources, and seasoned librarians, and hiring minimally qualified staff working for a minimum wage? On a side note, I witnessed firsthand at Boeing what outsourcing has done to a quality-driven company --[1798.42][1798.42](Laughter) -- by placing -- By placing profit over the safety of its products, their decision to outsource important, even strategic functions, has deteriorated the quality of their product and image.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Flossie Horgan. I live in Huntington Beach, and on the council agenda tonight, Item 24197 would privatize our library services. We hire a private firm to run our libraries. Okay. Item 24208, Huntington Beach would leave our membership in the League of California Cities. It's a statewide organization which promotes local decision-making, lobbies against policies that erode local control. So we want to get out of that, too. And then we would privatize the library's service owner, did I say that wrong? The Library Parent Guardian Review Board. We would have professionally-trained libraries. We have professionally-trained library staff. Listen, I read recently that part of the problem with constant insanity is that after a while, you forget how crazy it is. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, thank you. My first name is Bart, last name is McGrath, and my wife is standing here with me because I just came up here from the Naval Hospital at Cape Pendleton. I had surgery today, but I didn't want to miss this, regardless of feeling a little bit wonky, but I'll be okay. I just want to say this: I've worked with the library and my wife alongside me for 40 years next year, and we've served on two boards. We've served on the Library Patrons Foundation for a decade and a half or so, and we've been doing a car show, a two-day event. It'll be 40 years next year. And we do this to improve children's literacy through education. That's why my wife and I founded this nonprofit corporation that we had up. And our vehicle for the funds that we raise goes to the Children's Resource Center at the main Huntington Beach Public Library to further children's education, so that children, whether they come from a poor family, a middle-class family, a rich family, all have an opportunity to go to a public library, which is what I had the opportunity to do when I was a child. And I'll make this brief. When I was a young child, I went to the public library in the City of London, when the bombs were dropping and people were dying by the hundreds of thousands. The library was open in spite of all of that, and it helped me as a child to be able to do my little homework assignments. And I really believe that what this library does is tremendous. They open up seven days a week. It's like Walmart. They take on all comers. People go in there and they get help to fill out employment applications.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Will you call the next 10 speakers?
Yes. Okay. Can everybody hear me? The next 10 speakers are Wendy Rincon, Grant Rincon, Dom McGee, Debbie Cook, Michelle Ferry, Barbara Schneider, Delane Bailey, Gretchen Erickson, Deborah Jubinski, Linda Diaz. Please approach both podiums. Thank you.
We're all being very ginger with the steps. There's a little slipping hazard. So if you see people taking their times, we're just trying not to have any injuries. You can go ahead. Hello, my name is Wendy Rincon. I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm the leader of HB Band Book Storytime. This effort is made up of nonpartisan HB community members who are seeking to inform library patrons and community visitors of the book banning that has been championed by this city council majority, as well as the council's potential decision to collect proposals for the privatization of our HB libraries. This city's library system, especially the central branch, is the crown jewel of HB community services. The library books that have actually been removed do not line up with the rhetoric used by this council to justify the ordinance, and we are merely giving the community an opportunity to see the discrepancy with your own eyes. This community deserves transparency, and we will do the work to provide that if you don't.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, Brad Rincon, lifelong resident of Huntington Beach. Life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. There are no lines after this that say anything about needing dollars for this right, but we will if our library is privatized. My fellow Americans, like many of you, I am a God-fearing man who believes in equality under the law and in opportunity, and that people should only be judged by the content of their character. This council, our council, potentially seeks to sell our library to a private hedge fund to make it profitable. But whose profit, I ask? Not ours, but the profit of those who have already been carving and sacrificing the flesh and blood of our country upon the altar of the golden calf and who own the media that has divided us humble, ordinary Americans so profoundly. For an example of privatization, look at the Greyhound bus stations across the country that were sold to a financial company. The stations at the center of the cities are going to be demolished and replaced with housing for the wealthy. Their profit, not ours. Again, my fellow Americans like you, I'm a God-fearing man, and I know the Gospels well. I implore you, Council of Huntington Beach, to recall the portrayal of Christ by Judas Iscariot. Judas betrayed him with a kiss for 30 pieces of silver. Like Christ, the people of HB might temporarily be deprived of their birthright, of liberty, and equal pursuit of happiness, but we will not perish. And you, council, might enjoy your price of silver, but you cannot take your golden idols with you after this life. And it is you who have to justify to the Creator why you bound your charges with [bleep] change of ignorance.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Gretchen Erickson. I've lived in Huntington Beach for over 22 years. I've worked for the City of Huntington Beach since 2008, primarily in the Public Works Department. Early this year, I was given the esteemed privilege of becoming the chief steward for the Huntington Beach Municipal Teamsters. The Huntington Beach Municipal Teamsters, for those who don't know, are the rank-and-file employees across the city, including many of my fantastic library services staff who are with you this evening. How many of you have been to Storytime with Ms. Carey and Ms. Summer? It's fantastic! Have you visited Mr. Ron and Ms. April in the Maker Space? It's an amazing free resource for Christmas gifts and other fun things. Maybe you've gone to Ms. Kristine for help with your awful Model United Nations debate homework. Where would we be without her? And Ms. Claudia at Oakview with her storytimes and her homework help in the ESL? It's pretty hard to beat. Therefore, I am proud to speak on behalf of them and our entire 300-plus membership, many of whom are residents of this city, and I think all of us are of voting age, to oppose Item 22. In addition, I respectfully request a response to our request for information and the opportunity to meet and confer dated March 7th. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Michelle Ferry, and I have been a patron of this library since I was five. That makes it 50 years. The original Huntington Beach Library was founded in 1909, and it was a Carnegie library. What that means. Okay, Andrew Carnegie had more money than God, and he plunked down $60 million of it to fund about 1,700 public-free libraries. But there is a caveat. That was this: He paid for the buildings, but only if the individual communities managed their own collections and created programs that would benefit the public good of their own community. And for 115 years, our system have done just that, until now. Because in reality, LSS is a parasite. It is there to feed upon all we have built for the past century, and you will have to pay for it. You might as well send your hard-earned dollars directly to LSS or to Michael Posey. Now, Mr. Posey, I know you have skin in the game, and selling out your library is your job, but be aware, there are many others who have skin in the game, too. Us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I am Deborah Jubinski. I'm a 35-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm a city employee and a library patron. I am also privileged to be the board president of the Huntington Beach Management Employees Organization. HB MEO is the association that represents the city's mid-managers, your analysts, engineers, managers, supervisors, assistant city attorneys, and also our senior and principal librarians. I am speaking tonight on Item 22. Library staff are not a liability, and they are not just a line item in the budget. These people are caring and conscientious workers who create the value in the programs and services they provide. They are the heart and soul of our award-winning library. They are people who have continued to perform their jobs very well while faced with months of uncertainty that those jobs may be eliminated. Next to the beach, our library is probably our best-known and most-beloved facility. Please don't let your legacy be the dismantling of this beloved resource and the staff that makes it so awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Debbie Cook. I'm also a former mayor. At first, I couldn't figure out why the city was interested in outsourcing library services. We have a great library system with dedicated staff. But then I realized, this is about more than replacing our professional staff with lower-paid hourly workers. It's about lucrative software services contracts that lock in cities to proprietary software contracts. It's called vendor lock, and has been well-documented on the federal side where it's cost taxpayers billions. Once you're locked into a contract, the costs of switching to a different vendor are so high or difficult that the agency is essentially locked in forever. Purdue University has a good article on services contracts in libraries discussing some of the pitfalls in negotiating these contracts. Things like liability, confidentiality, jurisdictional issues, warranties can all be a huge burden from both an administrative perspective as well as a financial one to the city. This seems like a hasty action on the council's part. We all need more time to understand the ramifications, time to learn the mistakes that other jurisdictions have made. It costs nothing to become more knowledgeable, but a hasty decision will burden the city's residents for decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name's Dom McGee. I'm a 23-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm an immigrant, I'm a veteran, and I'm a small business owner in this city. Don Kalmy authored an op-ed recently where he wrote that the present city council majority want to, and I'll quote, "plod down a path nobody asked it to go down, privatizing the award-winning HB public library system." Well, that's not what's going on, is it, really? Privatization is, by definition, the transfer of a business, industry, or service from public to private ownership. We're once again redefining words. He says that Huntington Beach is on fire, and the extinguisher is to return to solving the real issues facing HB, the first of which is an imminent fiscal cliff. This is from the same guy who, along with the majority of the previous council, authorized a $430 million bond with 7% interest to pay for pensions. Let's not forget Elon and Breakwater. Now, the procurement of managed library services could actually save us some money, and it could bring sanity back to the library system. I see a lot of people here who are from the unions. I grew up in Yorkshire in the 80s, and the NUM, basically those guys suffered. There were soup kitchens. People were actually destroying their own furniture for firewood. I'm just saying that if you guys see these books that are pushed towards children with sexual graphic material, including sodomy, you wouldn't want your kids watching that. You wouldn't want your kids seeing it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Barbara Snyder. I'm a retired public librarian who has also consulted with libraries around the United States for the federal government. Privatization is opposed by the American Library Association because of the negative effects that are well-researched. The quality of library services, gathering of local information, and building of unique special collections useful to or treasured by the community are adversely affected. Book selection can no longer be tailored to local interests. Intellectual freedom may be curbed depending on the privatizing company and their financial resources, which will be limited. Loss of local community and government control. Loss of local involvement with foundations, the friends of the library, and other nonprofits. Loss of accountability and transparency. And with my last 10 seconds or so, I would like to recognize all of the wonderful comments we've heard from everybody else that is opposing privatization.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Delane Bailey, resident of Huntington Beach. I would like to take you back just a few years prior to the implementation of the Voters' Choice Act in Orange County in 2020. It was Election Day, and as patriotic Americans, we exercised one of the greatest rights given to us as citizens: to make our voices heard through the ballot box, to vote. We were confident in free and fair elections back then, although I'm not so sure we should have been. In those days, you went to a neighbor's garage, or maybe a fire station, or the local library, somewhere very close. Back then, Huntington Beach had a voting location in every precinct. There were 111 voting locations. How many do we have now? 13? Why is that? Of approximately 200,000 residents, an estimated 135,000 were registered voters. In 2016, the turnout for the general election was approximately 50% to 55%, or 70,000 ballots cast. In 111 precincts, that averaged about 630 ballots to count. It only took a few hours, and we had election results within 24 hours. It was Shammy D. who made a comment that for the city to run our own elections would be --
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Linda Diaz, and I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for about 35 years. I love the Huntington Beach Library. The Huntington Beach Library belongs to the people, and we're asking you to protect it for us and the people's jobs. The Huntington Beach Library is built on a great foundation. It's a magnificent place. It provides amazing knowledge and a wonderful experience for all children and adults. I'm just pleased that the library remains to be a safe environment for all children. Our public library is one of the best in Orange County, and we need to protect it. I'm not for outsourcing. I had my job outsourced. I worked for a major airline, and it doesn't work. They let us all go, and then they couldn't get us back. And they suffered. And they still are suffering. So I want you to think about it, because the people here, they're not replaceable. So be really careful, because once you lose them, you may not be able to get them back. Our library is not a concession stand. You can't outsource it. You know, we don't hand over the keys to our car to anybody, and we don't want to hand over the keys of the library to anybody. Please, protect our library, protect our employees. We don't want to give the keys to non-employees. It's not okay. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
The next 10 speakers: Althea Bean, Brianna Lee, Kira No, Cecilia Pham, Eve Hazard, Perry Mead, Julie Bixby, Urson Russell, Libby, Pablo Aspas Mayoral. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your names.
I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Okay, first speaker, go ahead.
When I was 10 years old, I came home to school one day with a little book sitting on my bed called "The Care and Keeping of You." Growing up with a single father, this book was crucial in understanding how my own body functioned and gave me the autonomy and words to describe the changes that was happening to me. While I was grateful enough to have a dad who worked to ensure my education on the changing aspects of my life, I am scared that the privatization of our beloved library and the continuous attack on member autonomy will hinder crucial access to books such as this one. As a graduating senior at Huntington Beach High School, the public library has acted as a safe haven for me and my peers for the past 18 years of my life. I have spent countless hours in the HB public library and I feel true frustration that what was once a peaceful sanctuary of learning and acceptance has now become a political tool and talking point used to fear monger and suppress our people. The library should not suffer as a result of growing partisan polarization and reactionary I urge each and every one of you to consider the harmful implications of privatizing our beloved library. The cultural services, educational resources, and comfort that the HBPL has provided and cultivated for decades will be completely uprooted through privatization, opening the floodgates for further adverse effects. Please reconsider your decision and the harm that privatization will have on our community as a whole.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Good evening, everyone. I am a student at Huntington Beach High School and I would have most likely spent my Tuesday night doing my gov homework at the public library, but I have come here today to speak against the privatization of the library under a for-profit, private organization. Speaking here today is a privilege because there is hope that the city council will listen, but that would unfortunately not be a guarantee from these private organizations according to their history. It would no longer be up to staff to determine what best serves our city's literary needs and interests. Private companies do not attend the library, we do. So does it not make sense for us to oversee our public services? Furthermore, these organizations save money by narrowing the library connection, collection. Therefore, our library's content will not reflect our interests, which is what is currently happening now after Escondido relinquished their library to LSNS. This would no longer be a city library but merely a lucrative property for an organization. As someone who has used the library's public services countless times, it saddens me that the public library would no longer be in the hands of our local community. If the aim of this is to save money, I urge you all to truly examine the true cost of this action. Please oppose Agenda Item 22. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
In third grade, after transferring schools, my mom had to ban me from my own school's library because I was using it as an escape in the new environment. But the library also became how I found my friends. As a love of books is what helped eight-year-old me find common ground in an uncommon place. What I'm trying to say is that public libraries are a safe haven for kids where they can find adventure, knowledge, friendship, and creativity? And this is why I, Eve Hazard, stand in opposition to Agenda Items 22 and 24. Aside from the already dystopian practice of restricting access to books, a private partnership with the library will undeniably diminish library services and bar the community from being involved in their own public space. Privatization of public libraries is not effective at cost reduction in the first place. Calabasas Library saved $68,000 in their first year after ending their private partnership with LSNS. You cannot call Agenda Item 22 an attempt to increase cost efficiency when it is part of a sequence of actions made in an attempt to limit the knowledge available in and about this public space. Further, the CEO of Library Systems and Services, the most likely partner, admitted that their method of cutting costs meant replacing unionized workers. Replacing unionized workers means replacing the people that have lived in the library, learned it inside and out, and care more about its service to the community the most. Are we willing to sacrifice this? In the end, private library management is for-profit. It is a way to decrease transparency and increase unfair control. So I ask you to act not for profit but for community. Oppose Agenda Items 22 and 24. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Cecilia Pham and I'm here today to speak about Agenda Item Number 22. As a high school student who has grown up going to the Huntington Beach Central Library, this matter is of special concern to me. In regard to the general topic of the privatization of libraries, the American Library Association does not support the privatization of libraries as they affirm that publicly funded libraries should remain directly accountable to the public they serve. I understand that under Agenda Item Number 22, the city of Huntington Beach is considering contracting with the Library Systems and Services Company. As a private company, nothing forces the LSS to disclose profits. LSS claims that savings come from bulk buying of materials, eliminating low-circulating materials, and reducing overhead costs. However, their actual savings are coming from decreased employee pay that is much lower than the industry average and insufficient expenditures to meet community needs. Furthermore, their savings are not returned to the local communities since they are a for-profit company. In my research, I discovered that only 56% of LSS employees thought that they had their work schedules enabled them to get their work done in a professional manner. And 43% of library staff surveyed clearly felt that the funds for collections were inadequate to address community needs. The privatization of the library is not the answer. In essence, I feel that it is imperative that the city council vote no on Agenda Item Number 22. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Brianna and I'm here to speak in strong opposition of the privatization of the library. What has transpired within our city council over the last few months has been nothing short of a political stunt. From the ballot measures to book censorship, I view nearly every action proposed by the majority as having an underlying political agenda. And for what should be a nonpartisan committee, I think it is a poor representation of our city's needs as a whole. There is not a single person that I've spoken to who supports the privatization of the library. And considering the lack of evidence to support this as a financially efficient partnership, I do not think that it is viable or worth it to relinquish our public library into the hands of a for-profit company. While I understand that no final decisions have been made, I also know that LSNS will be a big contender if this partnership were to materialize. Please consider, though, that one of the founders of this Maryland-based company has said verbatim that many libraries are atrocious and that is at the fault of the librarians. Under a potential partnership, our library would lose its community-driven nature and there is a high possibility that our current staff would be laid off. With full jurisdiction over every program, book, and employee that is within our library, a private company could change the entire atmosphere of this public space that we all share and love. It's also important to acknowledge that a private company could exploit this power to remove any material that they disagree with on a moral or political level. We saw this happen in Huntsville, Texas after a partnership was created following a dispute about a Pride Month display. And I fear that this reality is not far off from what could happen in HB. Please vote no on Item 22 and protect our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I'm Julie Bixby, a city employee for 38 years and a resident for even longer. An RFP gathers information. Make sure you get concrete steps the private company will take to save taxpayer money rather than feel-good marketing speak. Because the library already has taken concrete steps, such as reducing overhead by eliminating a dedicated director. It already has self-checkout and automated returns. It already outsources most of its cataloging and processing. It already gets grants to fund literacy programs. It already relies heavily on part-time, minimum-wage staff. And it already receives large donations from its support groups to purchase new materials. With all of these efficiencies already in place, what is left to cut? It's cutting hours, cutting programs, cutting salaries. LSS pays its full-time clerical employees little more than state minimum wage of $16 an hour. That's the same rate of pay the city paid for a full-time clerical position 24 years ago. What city employee with a mortgage to pay and dependents to care for is going to stick around when faced with such a drastic pay cut? The once-celebrated Huntington Beach Library will effectively become a revolving-door 10th agency for those who need to gain work experience before finding a better job elsewhere instead of the beloved public service it is now. Remember, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, City Council. My name's Urson Russell and I came here to talk about elections for just a moment. I was pretty stoked to see that you guys all passed Measure A, the citizens of Huntington Beach here, giving themselves the options to have more local control of their elections. Not mandatory, but options. And I find it fascinating that the people that worked against this measure, including the three of you in your bogus statements in the voter guide, are actually trying to put more control in the county or in the state over your elections. It seems quite ludicrous, but that's what good little socialists do, is kind of follow orders of everybody else. I'm going to talk about the libraries for a moment because my understanding is that this started from parents' concerns about inappropriate books and there's all this fluff and this nastiness. But I find it really just pure evil working through people where you have books that are having young boys give each other fellatio in a children's section and not one of the speakers that has come up here, don't shake your head, you know that gender queers in the children's section in our libraries. And the other books that are similar to that, we want to make sure that we keep out of there. This is like a union-like therapy session in here tonight. And I think that we need to bring reality into the fact that the founders of our country never envisioned anything like this. So I'll leave you with this. Society in its best state is a good thing and a blessing, but government in its best state is a necessary evil and its worst state an intolerable one. And that's what we continue to deal with here.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Pablo Aspas and I am a resident in Huntington Beach and I'm not a city employee. I use the public library. I'd like to talk about the benefit and the impact of the public library in my family. Let's start with my kids. Since they were small, they couldn't even talk. They attended to Storytime, craft, arts, robotics. Today, they are great readers and they're always looking for new books at the library. By the way, I miss still looking for all these inappropriate books. Believe me, I couldn't find any. Any! I'm still working hard to find one. Okay? But for me, I'm an immigrant, like your parents, Mayor Vandermark. And I was very lucky. I'm Hispanic like you. I took the citizenship course offered by the Literacy for Adults Program and I learned about history, constitution, civil rights. And last month, I passed the test for the citizenship and I became an American citizen. And believe me, there is some neighborhoods that they need the library where it is now. Not something private, not a business. But nothing of this can happen without the library workers, always professional and efficient. Please say no to the privatization.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, my name is Perry and as a kid, I basically grew up at the library as one of four children that shared one computer at home. And as a middle child, I was not first in line to get the computer. So I would spend all my time at the library using the internet access with having the computers, being able to read books that opened my mind to different concepts about the world. And that's what inspired me to want to go to college and went on to Berkeley and graduated from there and have come back to Orange County. And that's why I'm opposed to Agenda Item 22 because privatizing our libraries does two things. It hurts Huntington Beach families because when you privatize a library, you have to cut resources to save money, to get profits, right? And those resources that you're going to cut are internet probably access, cutting books, as we saw in Escondido already. They had to purge the shelves of books to save costs. So you're going to be cutting resources that just hurt kids and families in Huntington Beach. And the second part is, another way to save money, you're going to be cutting the salaries of the staff that work there. And so I'm completely opposed to Agenda Item 22. The library is a public good and it should remain with the public, not be privatized. And I hope the city council considers that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next 10?
Last call for Libby. The next 10 speakers are TJ England, Michael Craigz, Lee Olney, Carlos Rubio, Andrew Einhorn, Joan Gillinger, April Lammers, Amy Crapo, Laura Jenkins, Melissa Ronning.
First speaker, go ahead.
My name is TJ England. I'm a 55-year user of, not, our library hasn't been around that long, but I remember when it was built. I go there weekly. I love our excellent Huntington Beach Library. There's nothing wrong with it. I don't understand why you're trying to destroy it by privatization. There's nothing wrong with our excellent library. I have some questions for you. Why are you asking one company, one company only, that has relations with Mr. Posey, the former president of the city council, the former mayor? Why are you engaging with this disreputable company? I urge that you do not support 24197. I don't understand why you have this 21 citizens group who have no qualifications whom I know nothing about. I would not want my neighbors to be selecting the books my grandchildren now read. I don't know where they're coming from.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker?
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Craigz. I'm an eight-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm here tonight to oppose Agenda Items 22 and 24. When doing my own research on Agenda Item 22, you know, there's been a lot of talk about outsourcing or privatization. I don't really think it matters what you call it. You're changing something that is public and then outsourcing it to a private company. To me, that is privatization. I would also, I guess, like to just change my focus a little bit and talk about a phrase that's being passed around a lot when libraries are brought up. And that phrase is protect our kids, protect our children, save our children, something like that. A few months back, I was standing almost right here, holding a rainbow flag. Members in the audience were calling me homo, pedophile, groomer, a word that starts with F that I'm not going to repeat tonight. And I want to give you the opportunity to denounce those statements tonight when you're going to speak about, talking about protecting children or anything that you're going to do about outsourcing the library. What I do want to make a point, though, is that if you want to protect children, let's talk about funding battered women's shelters. Let's talk about funding Waymakers, the youth shelter in Central Park. Let's talk about ending homelessness for children in Orange County and hunger. That's how you protect children.
Next speaker?
Andy Einhorn, Huntington Beach. The majority council members made baseless accusations about voter fraud and provided absolutely no evidence of these claims. What have you achieved with Amendment A? Nothing. You spent $459,000 for amendments and future litigation borne by the state. You may have won this initial jump ball, but you shall lose the endgame. Huntington Beach taxpayers bear the burden of your toxic decisions, especially... Huntington Beach taxpayers bear the burden of your toxic decisions, especially when you have a budget shortfall. So, to cut your shortfall, you want to outsource our Golden Library. I say no to managed library services. The majority members have pushed Amendment A, library outsourcing, and now non-librarians evaluating books which represent additional farcical actions. The majority is unfit to serve this community. Your decisions have derailed Huntington Beach and injected poison into our community with your culture wars. You will cement your legacy as nothing more than lawsuits and deficit builders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Melissa Ronning. I am a citizen of Huntington Beach and a city employee at the Huntington Beach Public Library. I'd like you to take a look, a good look, at all of these people here tonight. These are the people who provide the city with award-winning storytimes and outstanding library services. These are the people who will not have comparable salaries that enable them to pay their mortgages each month when working for a company like LSNS. These are the same people who will no longer have health insurance to take care of their families by working for a company like LSNS. These are also the people who will not be able to retire when they, as they planned, when they will not have the pensions that they need. These are the people with the institutional knowledge who have worked for the library for 25 years or more. They will disappear because you have outsourced library services to a for-profit company. These are the volunteers who provide the library with the equivalent of over a million dollars in donations and time as library volunteers. These are the people who are going to start to disappear as they find employment at other libraries that appreciate the experience-
Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is April Lammers, and I am a Huntington Beach homeowner with a child in the Ocean View School District. I've also been a librarian at the Huntington Beach Library for 10 years since 2014. I thought I would retire here. Since I have only 90 seconds, let me share with you a few things that your library has accomplished in the last 90 days. Keep in mind that during this time, staff was aware of the rumors of outsourcing. So we completed two grants, Teens Work in the California State Parks Pass Grant. We applied for three new grants covering electronic resources and teen services. We developed community partnerships with Shipley Nature Center, NAMI-OC, Schools First, and Republic Services. We've had a craft swap program that brought out 100 donors and 200 shoppers who received a generous Makerspace donation that will allow us to purchase a multi-needle embroidery machine this summer. Speaking of which, we had 500 Makerspace appointments, and I actually did that when I thought I had 60 seconds, so it's more than that. Whatever an outsourcing company promises, I can guarantee that it will not be able to provide the quality and quantity of services that we currently enjoy. All of us here are public servants, and we all chose to be here because we wanted to serve the public. So let's get to work and do it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Laura Jenkins, and I'm the Senior Youth Services Librarian for the Huntington Beach Public Library. Eight years ago, I joined the library team as a clerk. My biggest job duty? Storytime. Lots of storytimes. I got to know the families at each library and watched as some of them welcomed new babies into their lives. The little ones became storytime regulars along with their older siblings, coming week after week, and learning and growing along with me. Those tiny little babies from my very first year as a storyteller are now in second grade, and like them, I've grown. I worked full-time as both a graduate student and library clerk, earning my master's degree. I got a promotion, and then another one, and soon enough, I wasn't doing storytime every week anymore. But I still see most of the families I served as a storyteller. Many of them still say hi to me when they visit Central Library. And now, the little boy from Murphy who was obsessed with cows when he was three loves dragons. The five-year-old girl who wanted to be a doctor, just like the surgeon that saved her life when she was two, can't wait to be a marine biologist. She walks out with an armful of ocean life books every time she visits. I could go on and on with stories from the families I've served proudly as a member of this city's staff. I don't know what the terms of an outsourcing contract might be, but I do know that outsourced libraries are widely known for being a revolving door of workers. Gone will be the days of the family librarian who grows with families as their children age. That, to me, is the biggest tragedy that will come with possible outsourcing. Together, let's ensure that the library's magic continues to enrich the lives of families for generations to come. Please, vote no.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council and staff, and this great community. My name is Carlos Rubio. I'm the president of Teamsters Local 911. But before I was president of Teamsters Local 911, I was a student at Golden West College playing on their water polo team, a championship water polo team. And I could only afford half of a sandwich. The Central Library was a place where I went to study and I felt safe. And you know what? Today, I can afford the whole sandwich. But we're here because this is a very important conversation, and I like the dialogue. This is important. But it's also important to know that there's the difference between an official relationship and the respect that the community deserves. So I'm here to speak on behalf of all of the HBMT members, the very concerned, stressed, anxious library workers. These are workers that need to be heard. This meeting would not be occurring without any of these public servants. I shall repeat, this meeting, the lights would not even be on. These are loyal, dedicated workers. The library, just with Teamsters, over 330 years of dedicated service to this community. I call that an investment. Don't give it away. We're here to talk. I talked to some of the city's staff. We're open to a conversation. See, we deal with this at the bargaining table, but we haven't had that opportunity, and it truly is unfortunate because this comes as a surprise. And in every city that I deal with, over 10,000 members, okay, I always tell the leaders, do not make permanent decisions-
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Joan Gillinger. I'm a resident of Huntington Beach and have been for a very long time. I have previously been a kindergarten teacher, and I've got to tell you, I am so thankful to live here where we have many opinions and everybody is being respectful and honoring each other. I thank you, everyone, and I appreciate you for listening, not just hearing, but listening to the people who come and depend on you for our livelihood and living here in Huntington Beach in a very positive, vibrant, and dynamic place. Any library we walk into, I have four children, two biological, two adopted, and the library was their key. They cherished every moment, and they're all doing well. And I thank you as administrators for keeping that going. We do not, we profit from our libraries. Please do not give our profit to another company. We need to profit. And if more volunteers are needed, I do believe you've got a room full of volunteers here and all around the city. If there's a budget problem, we've got volunteers in Huntington Beach. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to be here with our children. Thank you.
Next speaker, go ahead.
My name is Amy Crapo, and I am a librarian. I have worked for the city of Huntington Beach for 27 years. 24 years at the Oakview Branch Library as a literacy specialist, where I helped adults in our community learn to read, write, and speak English, and achieve wonderful things like improved job prospects, helping their children with homework, improved literacy skills as a family, and citizenship. And most recently, I am senior librarian for public services. I oversee our branches, our public service desks at Central Library, and adult programming. I have seen Huntington Beach go through ups and downs during my time here, with many different leaders, challenges, and triumphs. And through it all, Huntington Beach Public Library has been here for this community. We help people all day, every day, seven days a week, up to 12 hours a day. We serve the whole community, people of all ages, beliefs, walks of life. Our staff is talented. They are dedicated, and they are focused on public service. This library is already a bargain for Huntington Beach, doing an incredible job on a bare-bones budget. To the library team, I say unequivocally, you do not deserve what's happening. To the community, we will continue to give you our best for as long as we are able. To those who've come tonight-
Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
I am here to speak in opposition to Item 24, which attempts to create the rules for the Community Review Board for Children's Library Books. A recent 60 Minutes episode told the story of a town in South Carolina where a group of extremists tried to ban a list of 97 books from the schools. The superintendent made a very good point. Parents have every right to control what their child reads, but he said they don't have the right to control what other people's children read. This committee is being established to control what other people's children read. If HB is determined to restrict parental rights, this ordinance is so poorly written, it may not even do that very well. One concern is the lack of any appeals process. That's very authoritarian of you. Also, after purchasing all the books so that 21 people can review each of them, this ordinance says that the rejected books will be donated to a library in another city that doesn't have these restrictions. So now you want to fund other cities' libraries when this city is running short. Is that good governance? This ordinance says books must meet the community standards prior to being purchased by the city. However, community standards is not clearly defined, only whatever the board decides on any given day. Furthermore, how is the board supposed to evaluate the books if they can't be purchased by the city? Are the board members expected to purchase all the books on their own? Are they expected to travel to other cities and use their well-stocked libraries? None of those options make sense, and neither does this ordinance.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Lee Olney. My husband and I purchased our home in Huntington Beach in 1987 and raised our son here. We always felt that one of the greatest advantages of living here was a wonderful public library. What a great resource for citizens of all ages. Having paid property taxes here for 34 years, I feel I should have a say in how these property taxes are spent. I say that these taxes should be used to fund our award-winning public library and the library staff, including our professional librarians. These librarians are trained in librarianship, library management, material selection, and information technology. They should be the people selecting library materials, not a group of private citizens chosen by our City Council. The poor judgment that has been used in spending the city's reserves should not result in the decimation of library services. The library budget is one of the smallest in the city anyway, 1.8% of the budget. People who seldom use our library do not realize how important it is and how many functions it serves. It's much more than a repository for books, free access to computers and internet services, authoritative research databases, and periodicals, which you cannot access from elsewhere without paying for them. A good way to get reliable information instead of depending on Google. And since I don't have three minutes anymore, I was just going to say, I picked up some literature when I was here last night about the Makerspace. This looks like a place I'd like to go myself.
Thank you for coming.
Folks, my name is Roger Noor, and I apologize, but you know something? I'm not going to even talk about the Tesla, or my car, or my life, or anything today, because there's something more important, and that's the water bill. Please, everybody, go to the water. There's a meeting, there's a meeting for the water. Please, 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 go. They're going to raise our prices 25% in five years. I mean, please, everybody. Because it even says somewhere in the law, it says that if 50% of us don't oppose it, you guys automatically get to vote for it. 50% of who? The people that congregate and that talk about it during that meeting that you guys are going to have? And can you please tell us when that meeting is? Because it's really important. 25%. Guys, I mean, seriously, they get a lot of money that we don't even talk about. Seriously, ask for the CAFR, not the annual financial report. You have to ask for the comprehensive annual financial report. Comprehensive annual financial report. Nobody wants to see that. That has over four times the amount. They're making so much freaking money from us, it is insane. We have to find, they never mention all the money that they, all the individual agencies are operating, when they find, when they charge you and all this stuff, but like the police, when they impound cars and all that. They never tell you about that, and it's never part of the budget. You gotta, there's so much money. And the money that they have in the stocks, it's all from the time that they bought it. This is like years and centuries ago, not centuries, decades. But seriously, you guys got to pay attention to this. It's called the comprehensive annual financial report. Call them up-
Thank you for coming.
Please. Thank you. But please, go to the-
Thank you, thank you. The next 10 speakers, Denise Bell, Canaan Durham, Nora Peterson, Ann Palmer, Akimi Royer, Mary Cusamano, Erin Johnston, Carrie Johnson, Lawrence Elfenbein, Dina Chavez, Carol Dawes. First speaker, go ahead.
I'm Nora Peterson, 37-year resident. There is an insidious poison creeping over our city. Slowly by slowly, it's destroying the culture of Huntington Beach. The council's four majority members plan to turn our library to an LSNS corporation, a very shady company. It is owned by an East Coast private equity hedge fund. Their commitment is strictly to their investors. It is an LLC with no requirements to release information to the public. They are slated to operate our libraries with the goal of turning a profit. In the cities where LSNS Corp. has taken over libraries, they have closed all the branch libraries, sold the land, replaced professional librarians with high school-educated technicians. They shortened hours, cowed thousands of books, and reduced programming. Our city library opened in Huntington Beach in 1910. It is the defining jewel of our city. Huntington Beach residents love our libraries and our librarians. Libraries play a fundamental role in our society. Turning our libraries at the expense of our librarians into a for-profit enterprise is everything our culture stands against. It's anti-community, and I strongly oppose it. Serve the city, not a shady East Coast hedge fund.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi there. My name's Erin. I'm a 14-year resident, and I work in the city and have two children in Ocean View School District. As I'm listening to the feedback, I think we're at over 95% of speakers are opposed to these measures. Over 95% of the letters that I read in the supplemental communications are opposed to these measures. And in the Quality of Life study that you guys did, the response for library services was above average in satisfaction. So I think all the data points are saying that the community is very happy with these services and does not want any changes, myself included. Regarding the privatization, one of my concerns is that a private company shoots for at least a profit margin of 10%. So if your library budget is $5 million, which I think if it's 1.8% of your general fund, is about $5 million, that's $500,000 that need to be cut just to make room for the company's profit. to make room for the company's profit. In addition, I'd be worried about losing the grants and the money you get from the Friends of the Library, which I think might be around $400,000. So it's hard to imagine if you cut $900,000 out of a budget of $5 million, that you won't lose quality of service. And then in my remaining time, I want to shift to agenda item 23, which I think is about spending $850,000 above what we've already approved. So my question would be, why are we spending $850,000 more than our budget while considering something that upsets our citizens as much as privatizing our library?
Thank you. Next speaker?
Lawrence Elfenbein, 22-year resident of Huntington Beach. Public libraries trace their history back to Ben Franklin. Two days before Huntington Beach was incorporated, local citizens were already interested in opening a public library, and in June of 1909, the public library was owned by the city, which enacted ordinance 18, formally establishing the public library. But there are those who would outsource Huntington Beach Public Library to an East Coast hedge fund to save a few dollars. So the question is, what would we lose by privatizing the public library? The answer is everything. Here are but a few of the potential outcomes of privatization. One, access inequity concerns. Increased costs to users potentially limiting access for low-income people or marginalized part of the community that relies on the library for education and information. Two, loss of public control. Can prioritizing profit over public service leading to decisions not in a community interest, loss of accountability, and transparency, and democratic oversight. Three, loss of intellectual freedom. Privatization may impose restrictions on the types of materials acquired by the library, potentially limiting intellectual freedom.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I want to thank the Teamsters for coming out. The union members, our librarians, anybody that had anything better to do tonight, you came out here for this cause. I want to thank Dan Kalmak. He is the voice of reason, the champion of the people. I want to thank Rhonda Bolton, our legal champion here, and we have Natalie Moser, our literacy champion. These are all the bad, bad press that the other four plus five have given us here. If you are a business owner here, if you're from Visit HB, if you are from the Chamber of Commerce, you should be pissed at those people. These are only the local newspapers. We also had bad press from HuffPost, Washington Post, Reuters, Voice of OC, The Guardian across the pond, we had KCRCQ, we had KFI, NPR, LAS, KCAL, KBC, CNBC, CNN, and on, and on, and on. We had over 600 letters. We have over 100 speakers. We have people over here. I want to hear your voices. So, in the galley and over here, repeat after me, No22, No24.
No22, No24.
So they can hear you in the back again.
No22, No24.
Thanks. Good job.
There are a lot of people here to talk about library privatization, but that's not my focus today. My name is Kanan Durham, and I am the Executive Director of Pride at the Pier, a queer political advocacy nonprofit here in Orange County. We were founded a year ago, right here in Huntington Beach, after this city council majority passed the Pride flag ban ordinance. Today, after Measure B was passed with a low turnout of voters, we are here to continue our mission to educate, connect, and empower the local queer community to get involved in local politics and civic systems. We get messages from our queer neighbors here in Huntington Beach, Gracie, more and more every day, expressing their sense of dismay at the rhetoric being slung their way. I'm hoping that they hear me tonight when I say this. Nearly 4 million people live in Orange County, and according to the most recent census, over 385,000 of us are queer. We have always existed in Huntington Beach, and we always will. We are not political prey to be used to whip up chaos in our local governments and to justify bad governance like library privatization and book banning. We are fully fledged citizens in this community who have political power, and it's time we start using it.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, Ann Palmer. I'll go quickly here. I think most of us here can agree. We love books. We love our Huntington Beach Public Library. We love children. Okay. And we need their library experience to be safe and appropriate. We like to keep things local in Huntington Beach. It's our culture, and we're passionate about it. But as adults, we bear some responsibility for what kids are exposed to. We cannot be passionate locally and blind. Sadly, the situation needs to be addressed, and this is not working. It's gone on for months, and the situation's not been addressed. Grandstanding gaslighting, overcompensating, all over the place. We need relief. Privatization or just outsourcing, this is a contract, so you can look at it as scalable. Local control can be maintained. Staff and facility can be uniquely Huntington Beach. There's accountability, agility, and cost benefits available. And like food services and tech support, sometimes it's necessary. However, we should explore this with caution. Can the city resolve the issues? If so, they should. Do the vendors reflect Huntington Beach values, including the management and representatives? Will there be community input, which in other communities there has been? I wish you all good luck, and I'm going to send you a report from Florida that explores this.
Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Akemi Royer, and I'm a lifelong HB resident. I work as a city employee. I'm a literacy program specialist at the Huntington Beach Public Library. Our adult literacy program, and it's all of our program, has been thriving for 40 years, and we have served thousands of adult learners, with many of the volunteers who are here with us today. We have wait lists. We have wait lists at both sites. If the library is privatized, we will no longer qualify for our full grant funding of $95,574, which is not part of the city budget. That is money that we bring to Huntington Beach. Funding will go down. We will have to turn away many, many adults who come to us for help with their reading and writing skills, their English language skills, and just to get a high school diploma and so much more. City management, city council members, you have the power to decide who will get help with their literacy skills. You have the power to change lives. No. No on 24197. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mary Cusamano, and I was born with learning disabilities. Before I had moved to Huntington Beach 20 years ago, I did not have the resources available to help me. I have been a part of the Huntington Beach Public Library Literacy Program for over a year. It has given me much confidence. It has taught me how to read and reach my goals that are to get my GED in order to improve my circumstances to become a contributor member of the HB community. If the library can no longer offer me these free literacy services, I'd be stuck. I hope you would consider my needs and all the members of our community in your decision on whether to outsource the library.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. I'm Carol Dawes, a resident for 30 years in Huntington Beach. I am strongly opposed to the agenda item 22 regarding an RFP process for what you call managing library services. You may call it that, or even outsourcing, but that's just a dog whistle for privatization. Privatizing our public library is extremely bad decision-making. It would leave a stain on our city for years to come. Huntington Beach Public Library is one of the financially leanest library systems in the state. In fact, it ranks number one in California in efficiency among all five branch library systems. Don't be fooled by the conservatives on the council who tell you that savings can be realized cutting staff, services, and books. We would actually end up with a hollowed-out library with a paltry amount of savings going to the city, not the library, and all of it would be used for is paying for unnecessary lawsuits. Regarding the partisan review board, it's not only laughable, it's legally impossible the way it's written up in the ordinance. A partisan review board with no training in library science will have the final decision in what teen books our library can acquire, and it's not appealable by librarians. We all know the influence some of the extreme conservative churches has on our city government. That --
Thank you for coming. Next speaker?
I'm Carrie Johnson. Sorry. I'm Huntington Beach library employee since 2018, and I am a recipient of the mayor's HB Excellence Award, presented to me just a few months ago. It was a great honor. I was so humbled. My hard work, passion, and dedication as a youth services library assistant and two-time award-winning storyteller was recognized by you, and it was a wonderful honor, like I said. Notwithstanding, I am here again tonight in these same chambers, needing to defend that same job. Opposing item number 22, do not hand us over to outsourcing. Surely you are creative and resourceful enough to figure out alternative solutions to bolster the weak budget. Raise your heads back up, and heck, stay in the room and look at our faces. Look at our faces. We're sincere, hard-working, educated people. Let us continue to work and do the thing that we love, offering exceptional programs and resources to continue to put food on our tables and pay our mortgages. We have been pushed and prodded this year. Now this item 22 is too much. But please, know that we're not going to be broken. We will fight tooth and nail to protect not only our jobs, but our culture. We --
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dina Chavez. Our public library system is the finest in the county. It was built by the people for the people. It does not belong to you, and it's not yours to destroy. Yet you have apparently decided that you will somehow balance the city's budget on the back of our beloved public library, the department that provides the most significant return on investment. What will be cut? What programs will be lost? What services will be slashed? Which branches will be shuttered? What staff members do you plan to eliminate? Saving money by slashing programs and storytime for children is truly horrendous. Do not outsource our best resource. Keep our public library public and our tax dollars local. I implore the people of Huntington Beach to end the fleecing of our resources and stand up and fight for our most treasured institution, the Huntington Beach Public Library. Since I got 30 extra seconds, I want to thank everybody for coming and standing up for our library and our wonderful librarians and staff, and let's get ready to fight to save our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Ann Born, resident of Huntington Beach for 33 years. At the last council meeting, our former mayor, Shirley Detloff, stated that if a name appears on the voter rolls, that person has been fully vetted as to their identity. From my personal experience, I can tell you that is not true. I recently received a letter from the ROV stating that my signature didn't match the one on file at the office, and asked me to re-register. I went to the office and re-register without showing an ID. Now let's suppose that I have been one of the many thousands of peoples who had left California and some nefarious person had received that letter. They could simply assume my identity. Sounds like a case of voter fraud to me, and who would ever know? Andy Einhorn said, "Show us your data that our election is unsecure." Here is some data. When someone registers to vote and does not provide a California driver's license or a social security number, that data goes to the Social Security Office for verification. A recent summary of the entire database since 2011 shows 8.8 million submissions in California without a driver's license or social security number. And of that number, over 75% or approximately 6.7 million have come back with no matching record. Who are those people being registered? Our county register of voters have no idea. 6.7 million people who were registered to vote in our state since 2011, and our counties have no idea who these voters are.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last call. Last call for Denise Bell, Paula Schaefer, Amory Hansen, Gray Doughty, Harry McLaughlin, Dana Lee, Thomas Meisenhelder, Christopher Reeny, Larry Sloanan, Madeline Young, and Mina Lamara.
First speaker, you can go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and council members. My name is Paula Schaefer. I'm a resident of Huntington Beach and have been since the early 1990s. I'm not speaking about the library tonight. I'm actually addressing the continued efforts by the majority council members to minimize contact with its constituents. Since the beginning of the term, the majority has eliminated the ability to participate in council meetings via Zoom. You've repeatedly reduced the time allowed per individual speaker, which I know is the law and you can. So don't start with that. Eliminated several committees that included HB residents for participation. The majority of appointments to the committees have been the Fab Four, thus reducing the ability of the remaining three city council members to participate. Only after public outcry did you council members conduct public hearings on the proposed ballot measures. And now you eliminate the residents to sign up for public comments and require that each person come to City Hall to do so within a specific amount of time, that many people may be working during that time. Elections have consequences, and I know that. If you looked at the ballot measure results, you must have noticed that between 43 and 47% of the votes were against your three ballot measures. As elected officials, you must represent all members of the city, all residents, and all business owners within the city, and accept and respect everyone's opinion. I recommend that you stop your ongoing efforts to limit your exposure to all Huntington Beach residents' opinions and recognize --
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, go ahead.
I'm Harry McLaughlin. I live in Huntington Beach. I am here in opposition to agenda items 22 and 24. 24 is poorly written and ill-defined. Please table this item so that the following concerns may be thoroughly and intelligently addressed. Defining children as being under the age of 18 totally ignores early, middle, and late adolescent age groups. 16- and 17-year-olds are certainly not considered children. Hence, your definition of children's books is ridiculous. Community standards is ill-defined and vague. Which community? Calvary chapels? The homeless community regularly camped out on the surrounding park? Sexual content is any content of sexual nature? Books on menstruation? Adolescents and science? Yes. Bird and bee reproduction is graphically explained in books. Sexual references? How is that not already covered in sexual content? Seems the authors are in need of some therapy -- Seems the authors are in need of some therapy regarding their sexual obsession. All this to be decided by a board of 21 community amateurs requiring no qualifications. These inexperienced novices will be expected to blindly determine an annual budget and also review in excess of 6,000 books per year while being required to meet only twice a year. Thoroughly define the word "review." Read? Browse? Glance through? Then decide which books pass muster based on personal prejudice? Decide for parents which children's books are appropriate for their children? Board decisions are final and appealable?
Thank you for coming. Next speaker, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Gray Doughty. I come here to speak today on behalf of the Huntington Beach community who uses the library, but also as someone who is studying to become a librarian through a library science program in college. I come here with a base of learning, which is the main point of a library, a place to gain more knowledge and to be able to use a space to learn. Libraries are centers of knowledge that are meant for everyone and for all information to be available. Privatizing a public government building is an insane idea to gain control. Information is important, and banning books or banning people from gaining knowledge and information is taking away from our basic rights as people. Libraries are public for a reason, keep them that way. I want to talk a little bit about the book banning as well. The only arguments I've heard is, "I want to protect my children." If you're so scared about protecting your children, put your energy elsewhere. Look more at making our schools safer for all children, including our LGBTQ+ kids, and our city's homelessness problems, and also our youth shelters, which is right by the library. So, I think we really should just be focusing on other things. Why are we putting our energy and resources into things that are not helping the people? This takes away from the people. The library is for the people. We are supposed to have a government that helps us with our pursuit of knowledge and in a way that does-- in what way does privatizing a public space do that? I want to come back after my studies to my gorgeous lovely library and hopefully maybe even work there. Please don't take that away from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Reeny. I'm a Huntington Beach native, the son of a Huntington Beach fire captain. I've spent most of my life here, and I'm also a volunteer at Central Library. I come here to ask you to vote no on Item 24-197 because it is a false economy and detrimental in the long run. So Huntington Beach Public Library is an enviable library system. People have already commented how we went from a storefront to a Carnegie Building to the Richard Neutra Building, which is actually an architectural landmark. You find it in books of 20th-century architecture, which is wow. Now, as a library member and volunteer, I see that we serve the public, and as someone earlier mentioned, Walmart, yes, we welcome everybody and we do our best for them, and by and for, we help them well. I've had friends celebrate major life events at the library, the concourse d'élégance meets at the library at Central. I even have high school students coming in from Fountain Valley just to use the library because it's a safe place where you have Wi-Fi and a power outlet and don't have to pay for a coffee. It's a public good, it's a public service. It should be treated like such and not meant as a profit-making venture through outsourcing. Would we try to outsource the police certifier department to save money? And if we were going to do that and goes to one company, why would we not do our diligence and look at what happened with Santa Clarita, Escondido, and Riverside, or see why Fullerton decided against it? We need to do more homework. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I've heard a lot of talk by the minority of speakers today about how people in this community are quote "blind" about the books that are quote "deplorable" for students to read. And as someone who is actually blind, let me put my two cents in here. First of all, I was part of the public school system since I was three years old, and people have addressed my disability in one of three ways: fear, hostility, or just avoidance. Why do they do this? It's because us humans, we naturally treat the unknown with fear. We are afraid of what we don't understand. So how do we make the unknown known? Through books, people. We do it through books. We do it to the freedom of materials. As a student, as a young woman, as the future of America, I am here to fight for the future generations to have access to materials that will make our community safe. Delegates, please, hear me out. We are here to ensure that we are all safe in the communities we belong to, and that the future generations will consider everyone when making decisions in our communities now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I've been going to the Huntington Beach Public Library since I was two years old. My mom used to bring me to storytime, and we would listen to Ms. Barbara read The Very Hungry Caterpillar. And I'm sure we can all agree on the integrity of The Very Hungry Caterpillar as he eats his one apple on Monday, but it seems we can't agree on other children's books that we let our children read. But my mom has always let me read books, and she's always taken me to the library even still. Please vote no for the privatization of the library and for the censorship of books because I am not old enough to vote yet. And I would like to end with one last quote from The Silence That Bind Us, which is a book I checked out from the Huntington Beach Public Library. A man unmoved by statistics can still be moved by stories, and so we hope that the stories of the people who these policies will affect will be listened to today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Larry Sloanum, and I'm a 44-year resident of the city. My wife and I have both been here that long and love the town, love the city. I'm here speaking against Item Numbers 22, 23, and 24. They're all interrelated, but 23 is the most important one that I'm talking about. I don't see how you can approve a city budget or revise a city budget without taking into account all the other impacts that are going to affect it, such as possibly farming out or going to something out the library system. Or doing any organizing of the ordinance, the new ordinance, where you're going to have 21 members, council, you know, people that have to be appointed and organized. There's going to be a whole lot of expenses, a lot of things that need to be worked out that impact that budget. You guys need to work together. It needs to be a seven-person budget, and right now it's just a four-three budget. That's what we typically see, that's how all these issues typically run, and we're getting really tired of it. It's not the way a council is run, it's not the way a city is run, it's not the way you establish a responsible budget that the city can operate on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hansen. I'm speaking tonight in support of Item 25, Councilman McKeon's item to withdraw from the League of California Seas. Huntington Beach is in two societies that lobby for municipal interests, the League of California Seas and the Association of California Cities of Orange County. California has 482 seas, the United Nations has less countries. It's difficult to see how consensus could be formed among 482 seas. Orange County has 33 seas, so Huntington Beach is a stronger presence. Councilman McKeon's item will also reduce dues paid to both societies and travel expenses. When events are held in Huntington Beach, residents benefit from the tax revenue related to the events. Mr. John Muir once said that, quote, "When California was wild, it was the floweriest part of the continent," end quote. Like flowers, the uniqueness of each city is what makes it special, and each city, including Huntington Beach, must be allowed to shine. Once again, I urge a yes vote on Item 25. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Dana Lee. I'm a lifelong resident of Huntington Beach, and I have worked at the Huntington Beach Public Library for 12 years. I'm here in opposition to Item 22, outsourcing library services, and Item 24 that will censor our library collection. Item 22 puts the livelihoods of our incredibly dedicated, passionate, and professional library workers in jeopardy, not to mention the immense support of our extraordinarily generous volunteers and donors. It would cut services, programs, and materials just so someone can profit directly off of public funds. Our library is beloved by this community. If you should just come into the library, you'll see hundreds of postcards that patrons filled out in honor of Love Your Library Month. Go online, read rave reviews on Google, Yelp, TripAdvisor, drive around your neighborhood and see yard signs proudly displaying support for HBPL. Last year, the city conducted a quality-of-life survey in which residents evaluated the favorability of 30 major city services. Library services ranked third, just behind fire protection and paramedics and reliable water service to homes. Who would look at one of the premier services offered by the city and say, "Let's put them under new management"? I urge you to please do write by your residents and library employees and reject Items 22 and 24.
Thank you.
All right. Last call for Thomas Meisenhelder. The next 10. Butch Twining, Ken Inoue, Mason Cryfamiliar, Cryf Miller, Lowry Cryf Miller-- I'm sorry if I've said your name wrong-- Sue Welfringer, Leslie Selder, Diane Bentley, Chad Williams, Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke, and Tommy Simmons.
Good evening, my name is Kenny Inoue. I'm a 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm very much opposed to outsourcing of the Huntington Beach libraries. However, today, I'm here to speak about another potential issue. On February 23rd, I sent an email to the city attorney's office wherein I asked the city attorney to review the insurance policies, including business interruption insurance that the promoter of the airshow has in place in order to help ensure that the city of Huntington Beach will not be liable for any unanticipated events that may occur during the conjunction of the airshow. In addition, I'm also asking that the city attorney and the promoter of the airshow enter into an agreement wherein the promoter of the airshow agrees to hold Huntington Beach harmless for many actions, lawsuits, or any other costs that may arise as a result of the airshow. Mr. City Attorney, given the prior actions the airshow promoter, I believe that every effort should be taken by your office to protect the city from Huntington Beach from many actions that any damages that be caused by the airshow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
All right. My name is Mason Craft Miller. I've been going to the library since I was young, and it is an award-winning and amazing and welcoming place like Gander. It is a place where you can not only read, I check out a book, but hear stories read by students of APA. Hear-- perform stories there. These are the things that would have been lost, has have been in every library since LS and L have taken over. I gotta say, again, with the LGBTQ discrimination, it's not great. I mean, come on. I mean, we could probably at least do a little bit more better than we're used to, but it just-- it isn't like-- again, the library is chosen by the community, not by the city council, not by politics, not by someone else, but for the community. The community helped to provide the library itself. So, on behalf of myself, my mom, and I'm very proud--
Thank you.
So I've been speaking at these city council meetings over the year since the UnFab Four took over, as has my son. And one of the things that has just made me the most is the fact that the four don't bother to do any research. They don't do diligence when they're making a decision. So the decision to privatize our library alarms me. Let me just tell you a few things that have happened in other library systems. In Jackson County, the city paid them $5 million. A full one-third of that went to profit. The first thing they did was got rid of unionized workers, and they replaced them with minimum wage employees. You may not think that that costs the city, but it does, because those minimum wage employees need food stamps, they need housing support, and that comes from all of us, from our taxpayer dollars. So you may be looking for an easy way out, this is not it. They also reduced services. You heard about the adult literacy, all the great things that are going on in the library. I cannot believe that you would consider doing this, gutting our treasure, gutting our library, just so that Gracie can remove books, because that's what this is really all about. It's about Moms of Liberty Agenda. It's about removing something from the public sphere to the private, so that-- guess what? The First Amendment doesn't really count there, does it?
Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
My name is Diane Bentley, and I'm speaking tonight in opposition to Agenda Item Number 22, the proposal to release an RFP for the purpose of outsourcing the management of our library system in Huntington Beach. Let me be clear. The citizens of Huntington Beach do not want our library system to be outsourced. Our public library is functioning quite well without interference from people who know nothing about library management or library science. This effort is a thinly disguised tactic to try to control what HB citizens read and how we think and who we accept as fellow residents. If a for-profit library management company takes over our library system, you can be sure that branch libraries will be closed and our access to books and materials will be limited to what the city council majority wants us to be exposed to, namely their right-wing agenda. Our dedicated staff of professional librarians will lose their jobs to be replaced by a staff devoted to doing the will of the city council majority and their hand-picked so-called community review board that will prevent HB citizens from reading the books of their choice. I am here to tell you that we will fight you tooth and nail to prevent you from ruining our library system.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Sue Welfringer, and I oppose both 22 and 24. I will start with an apology to my community for feeling betrayed in the way that I voted the last election for council members, because I did not see the library as being a threat or an issue that I was going to have to come to counsel for for the past year with my fellow community members. If this many residents are deeply upset, maybe you are heading down the wrong road. Allow us to redirect you. Wouldn't it be nice to talk about even coyotes at this point? But the water is a true problem. One of the quotes in the letters I read today said, "Google will give 1,000, about 1,000 answers, a librarian will give you the right one." Do not privatize our library, and shame on you, Pat Burns, for calling opponents to this idea as being malicious individuals. Yes, I read the 600 emails opposing this actions where I saw your response to a resident. Words matter. I hope you've listened to all the speakers and read the emails. While it hurts my stomach to be here to defend our librarians, my heart is healed by hearing all the diverse, inclusive voices supporting our librarians and the collection of books we have. I am very concerned about Number 24. A person can decide they don't want to read a book, a person can decide they don't want their child to read that book, but a person or politically--
Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
Good evening, members of the Huntington Beach City Council. My name is Stephanie Camacho Van Dyke, and I'm the Senior Director of Advocacy and Education at the LGBTQ Center OC. We're a longstanding organization that serves the LGBTQ community here in Orange County. Today, I'm here to share my strong opposition to any decision by the city council to privatize our public library and the censorship of books. Libraries should continue to be a place for our local youth and community members to access factual, accurate information, literature, and community resources. These proposed changes are completely unnecessary and are an absolute disservice to the Huntington Beach community. Let's have trust in the integrity of our library system and the librarians who have the education and experience to support our library's infrastructure. I want to take a moment to recognize that it's been a full year since the implementation of the flag ban ordinance. It is crucial to acknowledge the motivation behind the ordinance in the first place, which was aimed at stifling the visibility of the pride flag. First, they came for our flag. Then, they came for our books. Now, they're coming for our libraries. What's next?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Butch Twining, 58-year resident of Huntington Beach. I wanted to come and speak on a couple of issues tonight. Number one, Item Number 25, the withdrawal from the League of California Cities. I am in full support of that. I believe that the League and the interest of Huntington Beach residents is no longer aligned, and nothing could be more obvious than their support of Amendment 1 this last primary election, where it looks like it might pass. It's very close. But if it does pass, we're gonna have group living homes, rehab facilities, and sober living homes in all of our neighborhoods, and there's nothing we can do about it. Read it. Second, I read the Register this morning, and I saw an article editorial by Dan Kalmak that says that this city council is going to drive the city off a financial cliff. I just want to remind you of one thing, Mr. Kalmak, and I'll just say two words. The Elon and Breakwater and the JPA cost us $15 million, and that's driving us off the cliff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Simmons, and I run the Orange County Poetry Slam. I am here to advocate for HB citizens, but also my poets who rely on our libraries. I strongly oppose Item 22. This will lead to the loss of our community in libraries, the loss of control where our tax money goes. Our librarians will leave because they won't be paid enough. This did not work in Calabasas, it did not work in Santa Clarita, and it will not work here. We will be further censored, we will have less access to books, internet, resources. We have an established, an esteemed library system. It is one of the best in this county right now. And you say you want to save our youth, then continue to provide a safe and public space where they can learn, find their identities, and prepare for their futures. Keep our libraries public. Vote no.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. My name is Chad Williams, born and raised here in Huntington Beach, currently a council candidate for November 2024. What brings me here today, as you'll see to the screen over here, is a Facebook post that I made that was removed. Go to Slide 2, which ultimately resulted in me being deplatformed from the program and temporarily banned from Facebook. For what crime? I posted a picture from this picture book that's targeted at four-years-olds currently in the city library as we speak right now. Slide Number 3, here's the receipts. There's two copies available. I checked this one out on the way in here today. Let's take a look at what they're exposing our children to. Take a look underneath the red right there. Underneath the red is the private parts in full. I covered that up for your own good, but you've got the full-on genitalia, the gross stuff. Exposing it to our children, what does it read? You'll all dip your bodies, your newly sprouting gangly bodies, your saggy, shapely, jiggly bodies, your cozy, crease, ancient bodies, beautiful bodies. This is normalizing adults bathing nude with children. This is a pedophile's dream. And I reached out to all seven of the council members, and only three of the council members got back, or only three did not get back to me renouncing this book. Imagine who? Natalie, Rhonda Bolton, and Dan Kalmak. And so we're normalizing pedophilia with these books, and you guys are wondering, why is it that we need to resort to this so-called privatization? It's because this city staff, these people, they can't stop showing adult privates to our children. And so, that's all I have to share with you guys today.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mabel McNaughton, and I'm here to talk. You may not get many kids under the age of 10, but here I am. I'm here to talk about moving books to a different section of the library just because they have hugging, kissing, et cetera. I've read Anne Walsh's "Are You There, God? It's Me, Margaret," and all I have to say is, wow, that book was awesome. And it makes me really, really, really sad that kids my age have to have their parent walk them to a new section and check out the book their child wanted. When I was younger, I got to check out any books I wanted, even if it had hugging and kissing in it, until now. In my life at my house, we have a big bookstore full of books of all kind, from books about fashion, hairstyles, and states, to body books about who has what part. So please put in mind what does kids go through to read a single book with this new rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Last call for Leslie Selder. The next 10. Beverly Renegar, Samuel Gunther, Carol Knod, Karenza Shutman, Tori Johnson, Linda Moon, Zignesh Padair, Yvonne Gonzalez Duncan.
First speaker, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm Samuel Gunther. I am a resident and as well as a man of God and a patriot. And what I will say is that I do strongly oppose numbers 22 and 24 on this today. Essentially, what's going on is a limiting of information, a limiting of information that is absolutely abhorrent, especially to those of us who love the First Amendment. It is our duties as Americans to encourage literacy and information and knowledge for every single one of our citizens. If you have a problem with that, then you have a problem with the founding of this country. If you think that you are responsible by keeping things out of your children's hands, then do your duty as a parent and keep it out of your children's hands. If you are not going to do your due diligence, don't count on somebody else to do it for you. They will get their hands on that material anyways. And furthermore, if you want to train up a child in the way they should go, then you should be a parent and teach them that. The Bible has plenty of things that are absolutely discouraging. There is rape, there is murder. There are all accounts of unimaginable horrors, and the good thing about having a good pastor and a good parent is someone to teach you and hold your hand and make sure that you know the good things that are to be found. It is our duty to ensure that everybody has free and open access to information so that every child can learn what they need to from our library systems.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Linda Moon. I'm a 50-year resident, a homeowner, a business owner, and a library patron. City council members are public servants charged with acting in the best interests of all of the residents. Handing over management of our libraries to a private corporation to fund personal culture wars violates that duty. Public libraries are not businesses or food services, and a for-profit business model will never provide an optimal level of library services. Imposition of the never-requested review board of politically-appointed residents to screen library materials instead of professionals is outrageous. Despite what some of you have said, four-year-olds do not come to the library unattended and are not having sexually-oriented materials thrust at them. Who are you to impose your values on other parents' children? And closing the library, the adult section of the library to anyone under 18 is absurd. Remember, those 17-year-olds will be voting next year. Regarding Item 25, leaving the League of Cities, Huntington Beach isn't an island on its own. Like it or not, we are one of hundreds of California cities, and we benefit from the resources offered by the League.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Karenza Shutman. I am a labor relations representative for the Orange County Employees Association, and I am here tonight on behalf of OCA and our affiliate, the Huntington Beach Management Employees Organization. We submitted a letter to the supplemental agenda on Item 24-197, but this is such an important issue, we also wanted to address the council and the public. HBMEO represents five library managers. You've already heard from four of them tonight. You have heard about the rewarding work they do for the Huntington Beach residents and the passion they share for that work. Their passion and that of thousands of other public library workers across the nation is not easily extinguished. They are devoted to their careers, they are committed to the public they serve, and they love their work. It is almost certain that authorizing issuance of an RFP to turn over the municipal service most valued by residents to a private contractor will damage you personally in the eyes of your constituents. But it will also damage the city in the eyes of high-quality prospective employees, undermining the reputation of Huntington Beach as a destination employer. Please don't cripple the city's ability to recruit and retain the best and the brightest. Please don't damage quality of life in Huntington Beach. Please preserve the library. We respectfully request that you decline to authorize issuance of this RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Tori Johnson. I'm a 13-year resident of Huntington Beach. I just, I didn't really plan anything because I didn't know how much time I'd have today speaking. I thought we'd have three minutes, but it's been changing every time. I wanted to talk about like this, the whole privatization thing, because I'm like, why is the general public just not hearing about it? Because it just seems to me like we have a real problem with transparency and that everything is based off of like Gracie's war on libraries, you know? And whatever else she can get attention for. She literally has no qualifications to do any of the stuff she's doing. She has zero education, no GED, no high school diploma. However, even that lady with learning disabilities just came up and told us she got a GED. So she used our local free library resources to do so. I recommend you do so, do the same thing, really. Just get your GED, Gracie. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Carol Knod, and I've lived in Huntington Beach for 50 years. And I've written something from my heart. I said, "Have you no shame? Why bring pain to our beloved library of historic fame? You sit there in elected seats meant for you to hear all the community to speak, but that is not your focus. You follow a leader who rants about a bloodbath. To your disgrace, you bring a private company to our path. The Huntington Beach is a lovely city by the sea. Voted many years ago for a library and park bonds. You hear, but you do not listen to our cries. A 4-3 vote is no surprise from you. May the ghosts of visionary leaders view this backward council with despair. Our library to profiteers, we will not share. For used book volunteers and all others I speak, for the community of readers, old and young, for the theater, the art displays, for the dedicated librarians and staff, for the beautiful Neutra design, for the beauty of our park, for overworked city employees forced to bend to your fearless demands. Again, I repeat a phrase that stopped an un-American committee in this to our democracy. Have you no shame."
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Yvonne Gonzalez Duncan, and I am a homeowner here in Huntington Beach over 34 years. I have, my career has been working with preschool children, with high school children, and we had a program called Raising a Reader. And my kids, my kids grew up here, they went to school here, and they loved the library. The library was like, you know, an oasis to my children. We used to live here, we lived here for a short period of time, and then we left, and then we came back. And the program that we, you know, the program here was just, the library was just, you know, a place to go to, and my kids loved it. We are now, you know, older, and we love that library. We don't, I'm opposed to 22 and 24. I write grants for children, for high school kids, for other kids. And one of the things that they look at, grant writers look at, is they look at the third-grade reading scores, and they determine how many prisons are going to be built in California. That's a real statistic that people look at. So libraries are important. My daughter works at a library now because she loved reading as a child.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Zignesh Padiyar. I'm a lifelong Huntington Beach resident of 33 years. First of all, congratulations, Tony Strickland, on making GOP Council Member of the Year. Great job, and thank you so much, Gracie, for leading by great example, by being the mayor, so we really appreciate that. Of course, of course. So you know what? I always love community engagement. This has been kind of nice to hear. In America, we always have our freedoms, we get to choose what we want, but it's gotten to the point now where those personal freedoms are kind of infringing on what we, as a community, find acceptable behavior, and especially what's been happening at the library. The information presented in front of the children, many examples, not only when you walk in through the door, but I've seen on the video as well, have kind of pushed it kind of beyond the limit. I honestly don't think the privatization of the library needs to happen, but we need to have some regulation and some control, because it is getting out of hand, what's happening there. And you can laugh about it all you want, you keep saying it's education, but what's the next step in education? Can we start making guns and doing rifle disassemblies in schools? That's education. Should we not be able to do that as well? Open our kids up to that? It's ludicrous what we're coming through right now. And just a couple of the last parts. I'm obviously wearing a material here that's kind of encapsulating of everyone here. Measure B passed just astoundingly in the last election here a couple of weeks ago, so I'm really glad that happened. I'm glad Huntington Beach got behind that message. And most importantly is our voter ID laws. I'm just really astounded that it's an argument that we can't have voter ID for our elections. We don't need an issue to arise in order to protect ourselves. We should be able to protect ourselves before an issue arises.
Thank you.
Last call for Beverly Renegar, Connor Medina, Amanda Herring, Marcus Herring, Cooper, Tim Gettis, Connie Boardman, Richard Glassman, Neil, and Russ Neal.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and honorable council members. My name is Connor Medina. I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager for the League of California Cities, Orange County Division, or CAL Cities. I'm here to urge the city to stay as members alongside 475 other cities statewide to advocate on crucial local issues that I know this council cares about. From combating retail theft to defending cities from a continued onslaught of legislation taking local control away from our coastal cities, and so many more shared issues, there is a lot of power in cities standing together rather than any one city acting in isolation. And your investment pays off. From the funding allocations and formulas that CAL Cities has fought for, for cities like Huntington Beach for decades, we have delivered a return of investment of $625 for each dollar invested for the past six fiscal years. We are the only association sponsoring legislation that would empower local governments to regulate sober living homes and provide accountability for bad actors. But Huntington Beach would be isolated from our advocacy efforts on these bills and others if the city leaves. Orange County's voice within CAL Cities will be weaker without you. Our division will lose important voices from your council and from your staff, and we are stronger together than when any city acts alone. Huntington Beach has been a member for most, if not all, of its history. Just this past August, I had my first division meeting in this position. We have 30 of 34 cities here at your beautiful senior center, and it's that kind of local collectiveness that the city will miss. There's strength in numbers, and the Orange County Division should not deprive itself of advocates when the city disagrees with the position.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Connie Boardman, former mayor and council member and former literacy volunteer at the library. Privatization or outsourcing of the library services is an awful idea. Our- Our public libraries have been at the heart of our community for over 100 years. The Quality of Life Survey done in 2023 found that the residents of Huntington Beach were very satisfied with the library system. This move to privatize is not about customer service. The mission of our library is to quote, "Enrich our community by providing innovative and traditional library services that inspire and encourage transformation and growth." Things like GED classes, literacy classes, homework help, storytimes, digital resources, a seed library, genealogy resources. A private company's main mission is profit. Keep our libraries public. Once again, we also have the Book Banning Committee back on the agenda. The council majority believes the political appointees will know better than parents about what their children should be reading and checking out from the library. They believe this so strongly that the decision about which books to ban will not be appealable to anyone, not the library director, not the council, not the city manager, no one. The Book Banning Committee is the definition of governmental overreach. Councilmember, book banning is not a tool of democracies, but it is a tool of fascism and authoritarianism. Please end your support of book banning tonight.
Next.
There's a number of issues relating to the city council's treatment of the library as expressed by a substantial volume of the speakers tonight, but I wanted to highlight in particular Section 2.66.050, Operating Policies of the Library Review Board. This section exempts this board from the service of the mutation, preventing members of city boards and commissions from serving on more than one board. Why is this board, of all others, subject to this exemption? This section cites large membership, but why is this taken for granted? What is the justification for a 21-member board that then requires exemptions to seat on it? Tell me one thing, one other thing, that you would support the government having a 21-member panel to tell you or your children what books they can read or anything in your life. Why is it okay to do this for the library? If council members cannot find eligible volunteers to seat with their appointments, then either those seats should remain empty, or the total size of the board should be reduced, or if there are any applicants who are currently sitting on other boards and commissions who would then want to be on the library commission, then they should resign those seats and take up this. If you're going to make cuts to the library, have the decency and moral backbone to stand up and tell the community directly. Don't hide behind privatization to attempt to wash your hands of this. You are the city council. What happens on your watch is your responsibility. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tim Gettis here. Now that the council majority has got its low turnout primary victory for Measure A, what happens next? The turnout was well under 40%, and the measure was supported by only a third of the electorate. Hardly a mandate. You are all like the dog, chasing the car and catching it. Now what? What are you going to do? Will you hope that the county and state let you off the hook so that you don't bankrupt the city trying to implement it on your own? That may not happen. From now on, you will hear the cry, "What will it cost? And what will we give up?" What will we, what will it cost? And what will we give up? You know the community won't stand to have a million dollars siphoned from city services to fund your flawed fantasy. Will your bite be worse than your bark? Or is it the other way around when you hit that car? Oh, by the way, no 22, no 24.
Hello, council. My name is Cooper, and I'm here to oppose the Agenda Items 22 and 24. I did a lot of research on them, but apparently so did like a lot of other people, especially those high schoolers who made really good points about the money. Because when you look into the track record, there are multiple cases when they switch from LSNS back to public management and save money. Calabasas was mentioned, but Santa Clarita saved almost 400K. Or, they're not going to tell you this in the RFP, of course, though, because they're salespeople. So let's learn from the mistakes of those other cities. And about Item 24, the review board, of course, I don't support it at all, but the 90-day window for challenging a book is like really long, three months after they give them the list, that would really like hold up things. So maybe even like a way for them to approve a book, like so that they don't get held up because the library would just have to wait to make sure that it doesn't get denied when they submit a request. Again, urging you to vote no on 22 and 24. Don't even get the RFPs, just stand with your citizens and just tell those companies to get lost. And last thing, though, is I want to address that visual aid that Chad Williams brought. That was a bathhouse, and you're the one making it weird. When I was little, I went to Tacopa Hot Springs with my family, and everyone was naked, and it was funny, but it wasn't like sexual like that. So just don't make it weird, like it's a bathhouse, so that's it.
Hey, I'm Marcus, Sunset Beach. So do we treasure our public assets, our libraries, our beaches, our parks? Are they resources for everyone in the city? Or are we just going to sell them off to the lowest bid? So it's clear that this council views our library as treasure to plunder. The push to privatize isn't happening in a vacuum. It's surfacing immense manufactured public panic that members of the local government are stoking. It's this 80s-style satanic panic all over again, but with a new target this time and more malevolent goals. The council is seizing this moment to hand over public treasures to their cronies in the business world. The library is built on decades of public investment. Giving it away to a for-profit company is not a partnership, it's a government handout. A handout that gifts LSNS, multiple buildings, millions of books, and the invaluable customer base of the Huntington Beach community. All of these assets accumulated over generations through public funds, donations, even volunteer work, and they're handing them all over to private equity, a private equity which is completely looting this country, even profiting when they run a company into the ground as they did with Toys R Us. The proposal is part of a disturbing trend where public goods are plundered for private gain. Anybody in this room actually like using a toll road? It costs 15 bucks to use a toll road in this county. So it's not about enhancing services or operational efficiency. It's a betrayal of the public trust. And let's not forget that the members of this council have been stoking fears in this community to advance themselves politically. Imagine being so triggered by gay people that you give away the public library. I don't think even they believe the stuff they're peddling. It's about their own political advancement, and you'll see them all run for.
Next.
Hold on.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark and council members. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. I support Agenda Items 13, 22, 24, and 25. But most of all, I want to congratulate you on the success of Measures A and B. Both measures were highly contested, and you faced well-funded and strong opposition. Your 2022 election has been validated in the solid margins by which these measures passed, and your mandate from the voters has been confirmed. You are making an impact for liberty worldwide as the courage and fortitude you demonstrate strikes fear in the hearts of the enemies of freedom everywhere. You can smell the fear of our would-be dictators as they feel the power slipping from their grasp, as they resort to evermore shrill and hyperbolic charges, as they fall back on censorship and lawfare and pile one lie upon another without shame or remorse. To all that, I say pay no attention to their ravings and press on to complete victory. You are doing God's work, and the people are on your side. Thank you.
Keep your comments to yourself, you don't need to badger anybody.
Okay. I'm going to.
Yeah, I'm talking to you guys, you guys can be removed very easily.
All right. Let me get the, can we go?
Hey, okay, we're going to call recess real quick. Five minutes, if you guys can talk to them, please.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Robyn, do we still have speakers?
Yeah, it's working. Yes, we do, we still have speakers. Okay, so I'm going to recall, last call for Amanda Herring and Richard Glassman, the next 10, which is the next 10 of 20 left. Gorge Washington, Catherine Goddard, Mary Jo Barretish, Mark Sheldon, Robbie Whitkam, Xandra Ewing, Lindsay Click, Michael Keane, Tencha Chavez.
You can go ahead.
I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for 41 years now. And my message this evening is going to be very short and to the point. We had a lot of good speakers about the library situation. Mine is related to the League of California Cities. I'm speaking, it's on Item Number 25. I'd like to hear the possible and convincing reason why this proposal is being made. How many of you have interfaced with the League in the past? It does help to interact with other cities through the great events, workshops, and resources that the League of California Cities provides, and discussing similar issues that, which have surfaced in other cities, and then seeing how the other cities have resolved those issues can be extremely valuable. Why would we turn our backs on these resources? If one is dissatisfied with the League, then you city council members need to become a working part of the League and help to improve whatever it is that you are dissatisfied with. Please don't make a decision this evening. Please carry this on to another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Xandra Ewing. I am 23, and I've lived here my entire life. A lot of people have said some great things about the library, and I feel like retreading that might be, I don't know enough about it. But when I was in fifth grade, I loved fantasy books, so I went to the Huntington Beach Public Library to check out Game of Thrones. And my dad saw the book and was like, he was like laughed and was like, "Yeah, you definitely shouldn't read this now, but when you're older, promise me you will come back to it." And that was like a moment between me and my dad, where he, as my parent, told me no. Like parenting is about communication between parents and their kids and like deciding like what's right for them. Agenda Item 24 takes that choice and communication away from parents and gives it to review board who arbitrarily make people's parenting decisions for them. Now, I'm not a parent, but I'd be pretty mad if 21 strangers were taking my freedom away from me like that. I, as someone who's lived here my entire life, I love the library. I went there a lot when I was younger. Now I'm older, and I go there regularly to work on college assignments because focusing is hard. The library is just like a crowning jewel of Huntington Beach. It's like something that like I like to show people when they're like visiting from out of state or whatever. Like I just have like friends and family that like show off the library and all the like different things it has, and they're always impressed. And it's like people from like LA and Riverside also are like, like they know about the library. Like this library is like a big deal. Like it's not just like people, it's an informed part of Huntington Beach. And by putting it in the hands of private people, it puts it like at risk, and something might happen to it, and I don't want to risk the library for a little bit of profit.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Michael Keane, and I've been a resident of Huntington Beach my entire life, 30 years, and a library patron for just as long, or at least as long as I can recall. I'm here to voice my opposition for Item 22, Managed Library Services, and Item 24, Parent Review Board for Children's Library, for reasons that I imagine at this point are pretty self-evident, but hey, let's review. I understand, as many do, the preliminary language of Item 22. However, the dominance of Library Systems and Services LLC is a national player in this field. With its demonstrable investment in Southern California, combined with the presence of former Huntington Beach Mayor Mike Posey as regional sales executive, makes it difficult to imagine a conclusion to this process that upon beginning would not eventually place library systems and services in operational control. that upon beginning would not eventually place library systems and services in operational control of our library. In my opinion, this would be ill-advised and detrimental. Contracting with LSS has in the past fallen short in other cities. We've heard plenty of examples with Santa Clarita and Calabasas noting a lack of savings and with San Juan City Library all the way over in Texas and the Oregon State Library noting a lack of financial transparency on LSS's part that prompted them to end their business relationship with the company. Further deleterious effects are more obvious on the front end as we've heard. The diminishing of library catalogs and resources, the ostensible savings that LSS seems to gain by cutting staff and hiring requirements that create a, what you wanna call it, higher turnover and threatening the loss of institutional knowledge that would benefit our library into the future. Let's see, well, that's about my time. No on 24 as well, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, go ahead.
My name is Robbie Whitcomb and I'm one of 108 people to speak apparently, maybe more. Huntington Beach has done very well by being business-minded. We have. We flourished. The downtown area was revitalized. I got here in 78. You couldn't be there at night because of bikers, I don't know how many else, I don't know who else was here, but it was a big deal. City Council helped bring it back. It's great. This is different. This is about community, okay? It seems to be a little bit about money and it seems like the people that are here aren't really worried about the money. If we lose money because of libraries and librarians, we're okay with that. Right? And the people that oppose it in different ways, nobody said that taking the authority away from the librarians was a good idea. They might contest what books there's. I can't speak to that, but I can speak to the fact that inasmuch as lifeguards are important here, police, we have some top police in the nation, firefighters, we should be proud of every single department. This should be a department. How is it that, say, 97 and nobody said that Parenting Magazine for the second year in a row named this?
Thank you.
The top.
Next speaker.
Hello, I'm Catherine Goddard and I'm here to make a couple of observations tonight. The four of you that have taken on the majority vote here in the city council, reducing the three people that represent me and others in the room tonight, have had a singular, what word shall I use? The, your time in office has the singular notation in my mind of being a lack of transparency. You've closed out virtually all citizen input to the point where we must show up here at the city council meetings to speak because there is no more committees or commissions to speak with. And then, two of the four of you and our city attorney and city manager actually left the room for at least an hour during public comments. So this is increasingly frustrating for us. I am here to talk about the fact that outsourcing library services to a private equity firm is a very poor idea for reasons you've heard and for what history tells us. Means that what happens is we lose the staff that we currently have and you go to something that's akin to a public, a, it's a computer, it's a, it's a computer-generated sort of process of how we go about the library and reducing the staff to where you have clerks that are sitting somewhere out there in the universe at the other end of a computer line. It's a very poor idea. I urge you to vote that down and to look at other ways.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Click. I am a mother in Huntington Beach. I've been here for 20 years. I'm a children's librarian. I've been one for 13 years and I work for the county of Orange. I was here last time when you were talking about censoring books and I'm firmly opposed to 24. I don't know why this guy keeps tapping his sign over here, but it's pretty obnoxious. So, there was a lot of comments about how this isn't your grandmother's library, but my grandmother's lived, she was born in like 1940 and 50 years ago, that would be 1974. So if we had a library that looked like 1974, I guarantee we wouldn't have so many people back here supporting it because no one would go. A library reflects the times that we live in, whether you like the times or not. This book, Gender Queer, has checked out 55 times from the Huntington Beach Library. It's from about, I think it's 2017. It's a hot-button issue and that is why it's in the library, because people are very passionate about this issue, transgender rights. It's in the adult section. Anyone can check it out. Children are at the library with their parents, so if they want to let them check it out, they can do that. It's very simple. This ordinance is completely unworkable. As a librarian, I review books twice every other week, hundreds of books. This says that this group is gonna meet twice a year and they're gonna-
Thank you. Next speaker.
All right, so, give me a child for the first five years of his life and he will be mine forever. Vladimir Lenin said that. You know, so, we got all these people over here and they're passively aggressively attacking children and you guys are all liars. All of you guys are liars. And you don't want to protect children, you want to hurt children with your passive-aggressive lies. And to all you union members that are in here, I don't know, I don't see any union members in here anymore, but you're being set up. Do you really agree with this? You really agree with this? You're being set up and used, just like everyone else that's in the middle of the road, okay? You guys are being used. And you are passively aggressively attacking children and we don't have to take it, you know what I mean? And we're fighting tooth and nail, you know? Why, all you union members, why don't you collectively bargain with us and actually protect children and not be used and set up by your union bosses? Union bosses, huh?
Just a sec. We're not yelling out.
You guys are liars and you guys are liars. 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 Skywalker over and out.
Thank you. Is he speaking? Next speaker, go ahead.
Okay. All right. Thank you. My name is Mark Sheldon. I am a 30-plus-year resident of Huntington Beach and for information purposes only, I am the former chair of the former Huntington Beach Environmental Board. So I know a little bit about working on a Brown Act Committee. I do appreciate the fact that the Brown Act is cited in the Agenda Item 24 to create, on the creation of the Oversight Board, but I think it's going to be important for that board and the people appointing it to understand what Brown Act compliance means. The constraints it puts on communications and the interim between potentially widely spaced out meetings of a large group. And that's going to be quite a challenge and you need to understand how that works. They need to understand the importance of it. I'd also say that it's going to be very problematic for that board to be, in the words of the action, non-appellable. It's, never has there been a board made that couldn't be managed by its own city council. And that, that is something that needs to be carefully considered in terms of structuring it. And lastly, I do oppose the 20, item 22 on privatizing the libraries. The greatest private financing of public libraries in this country was by Andrew Carnegie, who gave them all back to the communities that they were in for them to manage.
All right. Last call for Tencha Chavez and the last group, Ian Westerbeck, Stacy, Mia, Mia, what is, McNana, Kayla Gallagher, Perry Clitherow, Michael Escarcito, John B. Heilman, Jerry Donahoe, or Hugh, sorry, and Michael Selna.
First speaker. Go ahead.
My name is Ian Westerbeck. Ladies and gentlemen, the privatization of our public library will result in a degradation in the quality of our library services available to our community. Private companies have a primary interest in making a profit. Privatizing our public library will create incentives to let quality slip and detrimentally affect those who rely on this public resource for more than just books. Private companies interested in keeping staff costs low may hire library workers who do not have the proper experience or skillset needed to provide quality library service. In these times, we must ask ourselves who we would prefer to oversee the resources offered by our public library? A massive corporation that oversees 84 libraries across the country? That is completely unaccountable to regulation by its users and destroys unionized jobs in its wake? Excuse me, or a body regulated by this very city council? This motion will be a complete humiliation to our city's library system and is a step towards authoritarian fascism in the interest of corporate greed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Firstly, if you think books teaching pubescent minors about their changing bodies, if you think anything about that is erotic or pornographic, I think you are what's posing a danger to our children. As a lifelong citizen of Huntington Beach, I am deeply opposed to the privatization of our beautiful library. Our central library, as we know it, has been an incredible public resource for nearly 50 years and I have been blessed to enjoy it freely for 21 of those 50 years. It has given equitable access to education for many of us, allowing opportunities to exercise our intellectual freedoms in a safe and inclusive space. Privatization of our library would be a slap in the face to our incredible librarians and volunteers and the taxpayers who both serve and utilize this well-deserved community space by stripping us of our ownership and sense of belonging in this sacred space. Out-of-state, for-profit investors don't belong in our schools, places of worship, or libraries. Our community is not their playground, so tell them to take their ball and go home. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Michael Selna, 50-year resident. In my career, I was, in my 40-year career, I was a public servant in wastewater. For those that don't know what that means, it's sewage collection and sewage treatment. And I'm here to talk about the library, so why do I bring up sewage systems? Turns out there are some positive similarities. Most wastewater systems have a central location and satellite treatment facilities. Libraries have a central library and branches. It turns out it was tried in the wastewater industry, privatization. For-profit focused on the bottom line and when it was tried, it often resulted in a lower level of service and sometimes the closure of one of those satellite facilities. And that raised a real stink. The privatization movement did not work for that essential service. And my concern is that the focus on profit will result in a lower level of service in our libraries and possible closure of branches like it did in wastewater. Failures in my industry by private, for-profit organizations were catastrophic. I believe privatization of the library system will also be catastrophic. Please consider the fact that privatization of essential public services often does not work because of the focus on the bottom line rather than a focus on a high level of service. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jerry Donahue, 50-year resident of Huntington Beach. Guy Clark is a Texas singer-songwriter who wrote Stuff That Works. I got an old blue shirt and it suits me just fine. I like the way it feels, so I wear it all the time. I got an old guitar, won't ever stay in tune. I like the way it sounds in a dark and empty room. I got an old pair of boots and they fit me just right. Well, I can work all day and I can dance all night. I got an old used car and it runs just like a Top. I got the feelings that it's never gonna stop. Stuff that works, stuff that holds up. That's the kind of stuff you don't hang on a wall. Stuff that's real, stuff you feel. That's the kind of stuff you reach for when you fall. You find stuff that works in the Huntington Beach Public Library. Please don't privatize. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Stacy Miniano and I'm a mother of three school-aged children, one being the nine-year-old Mabel that you saw earlier. I'm a 21-year resident of Huntington Beach and I'm here speaking to express my support for our public library system and my opposition to items 22 and 24 on the agenda. Please do not privatize our library. It is an incredible place for all of our community and currently operates to serve the public good. A private, for-profit company has different priorities and will always put its own financial gain over the wants and needs of our community. Does this mean fewer services or perhaps the sale of our private information? Or even fewer library resources and staff? Put Huntington Beach first, not profits and not politics. All of you ran on a platform to improve our great city. How is this improving anything? Please get back to the business of actually making the city better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. I came here today, well, I come here every other week, but I came here today to speak on regards to the library situation. I'm against items 22 and 24. 24 because it's culture war nonsense that really has nothing to do with our city business and 22 because though it is pretty directly related to our city business, I just plain oppose it. It's bad economics, it's bad fiscal policy. Our employees are our greatest asset in this city. We rely on them to take care of a lot of things. I bring up housing a lot and I know most of you ignore me. But the fact that people who work in this city, who contribute to this city, who break their backs and sweat all day for this city, many of them can't even dream of living in this city, is kind of upsetting already and we're trying to add librarians to that list with all the other hard-working people who make this city happen. And that's very upsetting to me and pay cuts for librarians, I'm, that's rotten. My grandma was a librarian, so screw you. And, I don't know, it's not gonna make our libraries better. We've got an awesome library, so don't fix what's not broke.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is John Heilman. I'm here to talk about issue 22, the RFP for the library. What are you trying to accomplish with the RFP for the library services? How are the proposals being evaluated? What auditing and transparency exists in the approval process? Open source has shown what is capable with cooperation. Have you looked at those options? What about volunteering? My sister is a library director and I've created software tools for her for free. Which begs the question, what other options exist for accomplishing the desired changes? Maybe shutting off portions of the parking lot lights from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM? The books should be appropriately categorized. People were worried about inappropriate material being put in front of children, which is legitimate concern. But censorship should only be applied in the most extreme circumstances. Just as promoting racism seems appropriate to me, promoting gender transition also seems appropriate, inappropriate to me. appropriate, inappropriate to me. But I don't want either category banned. Access shouldn't be denied to curious minds, nor should ideological material be preferentially promoted. Do what makes people caring, curious, appreciative, and capable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Sonia, and thanks, please, for your presence tonight. After listening this evening, and only one word comes to mind to me is, I just feel blindsided. Feel blindsided by the stuff that we're talking about, that I think we have bigger fish to fry, and it's just hard to make sense of. I mean, what is really up your sleeves? Why the library? It makes no sense. Someone mentioned, what will it cost and what will we give up? Well, maybe we could cut a couple of bigger fish's salary, like chief assistant city attorney, two assistant city attorneys, two senior deputy city attorneys, a deputy city attorney, and four support staff. I don't get it. And yeah, leave our library alone, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that concludes public comments.
Okay. Thank you. So now we're moving on to council committee appointment announcements. Do any council members have any committee appointment announcements? Moving on to number ten, approved amendment for the mayor's council liaison list. You gotta put your mic on.
Second.
Anybody have anything to say? Are we voting?
Call the vote.
Okay, call the vote.
Councilmember Mosher?
No.
Councilmember Bolton?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yeah.
Mayor Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelmick?
No.
The item passes four-three.
Thank you. Moving on to AB one-two-three reporting, does anyone have anything to report? Okay, openness and negotiations and disclosure, does anyone have anything to disclose? City managers' report, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Consent calendar, would any council members like to pull any items?
I'd like to pull twelve.
Okay.
I'd like to remove, I'd like to move the remainder of the consent calendar.
One second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote on items eleven, thirteen is amended by supplemental communication, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen's been withdrawn, and seventeen through twenty-one. Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Councilmember Bolton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Aye.
Mayor Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Those items pass seven-zero.
Thank you. Councilmember Moser?
Thank you. So I am pulling number twelve, which is the monthly update of activities for citizen boards, commissions, committees, and regional agencies, specifically because of the Community and Library Services Commission Park Naming and Memorials Committee meeting section. Unfortunately, so this is the meeting from February, and unfortunately, the March meeting was canceled. As a result, the minutes were not approved, so there's no link to the March, or excuse me, the February minutes. But I just wanted to add, since I was there that evening, that it's not noted here, that's the day, you don't have to note this part, that's the day that the books started getting moved in the library, and so I was in that meeting that evening giving public comments. But at the end of the meeting, and what I would like to have added to the notes, is that multiple commissioners asked for a presentation by staff at the next meeting with regards to the library and what was happening with regarding transparency of any actions that were being taken, and I just noted that it didn't say that here, and that's all. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to proceed with that amendment.
Second.
We'll go ahead and take a vote. Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kelmick?
Aye.
I'd just like to note for the record that I do not enter any information into that spreadsheet that I pull information from. That's done by staff liaisons, so I just wanna make that clear, okay? And I'll go ahead and update the report afterwards.
Thank you. Moving on to administrative items, number, item number twenty-two. Staff, please introduce your report.
Good evening, mayor and council members. City staff was recently approached by a contractor who proposed to manage the day-to-day operations of the Huntington Beach Public Library System. The proposal stated that the contractor could provide the same level of services that exist today and add a substantial cost savings for the city. So given this information, staff began a preliminary review and learned that there exists other contractors who may be qualified to provide similar services, and so should the city council wish to explore the feasibility of outsourcing, staff recommends issuing a request for proposals for managed library services at equal or higher levels. And if council authorizes an RFP, it will provide potential contractors with an equal and competitive opportunity. It'll also allow staff to engage in a more comprehensive review of these services and their feasibility in Huntington Beach. Engaging in an RFP process does not commit the city to outsourcing. It provides a proposed agreement with the contractor with detailed costs and services for your consideration in the future, and if approved, the contractor would oversee day-to-day operations at the city's direction. The city would continue to maintain ownership of the system, which includes the buildings, books, furniture, equipment, and all other assets inside. And lastly, if council directs staff to issue an RFP, staff recommends beginning the meet-and-confer process with HBMT and MEO to discuss further. And so that concludes my report. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions? Nope. Okay, so...
I'll move, I'll move the staff.
Okay.
Second.
I think we have some conversation to have happen here, if that's okay with the mayor.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I think that it's unfortunate that, after all of the people that were here tonight, and by the way, I don't know what you're going to vote, so that being said, I'm not sure about that, but it's unfortunate that we have in this council and on this dais a lack of responsiveness and discussion, because again, I don't know what everyone's going to vote, to all of the people who came tonight to speak about their love for the library and their concerns about privatizing it. So really, before I give kind of my comments on it, I just would hope that this council would have a discussion about this, since it's obviously such an important issue for the community, just to talk about what you think about it, in lieu of just going straight to a vote. So I would love to hear from the council and their opinions.
I'd like to, it's a RFP, it's just a request to see some options. We're looking at saving money. We're looking at some kind of, if we can't, we're looking at revenues, we're looking at savings. There's a lot of things that have taken place in the last few years around us that cost a lot of money, that take away from our city, and we are trying to look at ways to just serve the people in the best way we can in every way. If we get identical services at a million dollars a year cheaper, and from my understanding, the employees that...
Okay, everyone had a chance to speak, and right now, we have Mayor Pro Tem Pat Burns, so I'd appreciate it if everybody was as respectful with him as we have been with you. Thank you.
But like I said, it's a request for a proposal, and it doesn't obligate us to anything, it just gets us, gives us an idea at options, at how we can handle some of the finances within this city, and I don't see any harm with going out and getting a few bids and seeing what they have to offer. And from what I understand, they're gonna keep our employees, but we'll see, we'll see with the RFP, and we can make requests, we can put specifications. Am I right on that? We can put specifications on what we require or ask for through the RFP, right?
That's correct. Okay. Correct. Staff typically works on the RFP and usually puts parameters in place that they would like to see in a contract in the future.
It is not a contract. It is just an RFP. It is just a request for a proposal.
Yes.
That's all we're asking for, and I do not see, unfortunately, there's been a lot of misinformation put out there, and it's very unfortunate because it's really, I think, poisoned the crowd to think that we are gonna take, remove our library or remove the employees. I like our libraries. I don't wanna see them diminished or degraded in any way, but if we can get the same service, if we can do it more economically, or serve the citizens better by doing it more economically, and if it doesn't work out, we are not obligated to anything. I think it's our duty as leaders in this community, council members, to look at those kind of savings. I think we'd be negligent in our job if we didn't. That's it. RFP.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll follow up out on that. So for me, it's pretty simple, right? Like, what's wrong with issuing an RFP, which is a request for proposals? That's the first step. What's wrong with issuing an RFP to obtain all the facts and answers before people rush to judgment about what they think the facts are? Hypothetically speaking, if a company oversaw operations of any department in the city which created cost savings, kept the current employees pay the same, and kept and possibly increased the services and programs provided, would anyone have an issue with that? We should do everything we can to not raise taxes in order to pay for our expenses, and that includes creating efficiencies and cost savings wherever we can, especially with the state's massive budget deficit. The RFP would go out for multiple companies to submit proposals, a simple RFP process in order to perform the initial research on any proposal brought to the city should not create division. Unfortunately, there are groups in the city and members of the city council that are using this RFP process to sow confusion, fear, and division in our community, which prevents the normal business proceedings of the city from occurring, and that's a shame. They have whipped up everyone prematurely, using fear tactics before giving the process a fair opportunity. We can always negotiate into the contract quality control metrics and other deal points to address any concerns we may have. The city will always have oversight and ultimate control of the contract and library. I totally understand concerns that have been raised, I just think it's premature to pass judgment until all the facts are known.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, councilmember Bolton?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, if I may, unless you wanna go, did you have more questions? Okay. So first question is, I wanna know how much the staff already knows about this? How many hours has the staff put into researching this proposal thus far? Because I will say, each person, I believe, has been briefed, or each person was offered a briefing from the staff about, you know, the solicitation or whatever that we received from LSNS. And it appeared to me that quite a bit of work had already been put into checking into whether LSNS's claims were, you know, legitimate. So question number one, how much time has the staff already put into looking into this? You just tell me rough estimate of number of hours.
We didn't quantify that.
You did not?
That's correct.
Well, I mean, the person who worked on it, though, can tell me how many days they spent working on it.
Yeah, they can give you a good faith estimate, but I know we don't have like a specific number for that.
No, no, I just wanted, I just want an idea. I mean, it looks like the staff put quite a bit of work in it, because I felt like they were pretty thorough in their briefing that they gave us prior to this meeting.
You can give it a guess.
I think Sonia and I worked primarily on this, on the initial research. If I had to guess, maybe about twenty or so hours.
Okay, thank you. So the number that I've heard floating around is a million dollars, that LSNS said they could save us a million dollars. Is that accurate? Because I don't think I ever saw the letter from LSNS. So is that what they said? Is that the claim that they made?
That's a claim they made.
Okay, well, I will say this. Certainly no disagreement about checking into cost savings where someone proposes that they can do cost savings. But my understanding of what we already know based on the work that the staff already has done is, if you take a million dollars in savings, subtract out what's gonna be lost, because the donations from the friends of the library and the children, friends of the children's library will not go to a private company, and so that's somebody said about four hundred thousand dollars, three fifty, four hundred thousand a year, so that's six fifty, right? Is it, is it worth six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to...
Donations are in addition to...
Our library?
I would say that that's one-sided, because you don't know if there's other people that would step up and fill that gap.
Okay.
No, there's, there's, look, hold on, there's a whole, there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of people that...
Somebody is gonna donate to a private company?
They, yes, yes.
Okay, all right, hey, hey, that's, that's, that's your position, that's your position. Okay, now, let's see, there was some, there was another question I wanted to ask, too. Okay, well, I mean, from my perspective, it looks like six hundred and fifty thousand, if we're lucky, I doubt that they would be able to maintain the same level of services simply because of what their business model is. I'm also a little suspicious, because my understanding is that LSNS is one of two organizations that does this type of work that we're aware of, is that right?
One that would be most similar in nature to LSNS. There is one out there in Tennessee. We are aware of other firms or other organizations that have submitted proposals under different circumstances, or maybe sometimes somewhat similar circumstances, but there are multiple potential proposers out there.
That's, that's different from what I understood when we met last week or week before last.
And I do wanna say that information was figured out after those briefings, when we did a little bit more digging.
Okay, well, how many firms are there?
So, in terms of private companies, we are aware of two, but we do know that in the past, organizations like a Board of Education has submitted, or another county has submitted. So they're not necessarily the same in terms of structure as LSNS, but they're out there.
So another county, like another county government would submit to take over our library?
There was one instance, when San Bernardino County submitted a proposal for Riverside, when they were looking for someone to operate their county system.
And what happened in that case?
They did not win. So LSSI, which is what they were called back then, they had won the proposal.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I mean, based on, usually, you know, not in favor of, certainly not in favor of wasting money. It's not like the library loses money. It's not like it operates inefficiently. I'm not aware of anyone ever saying that the library operates inefficiently. I think it's, what we're looking at is a question of, can we save money overall? Okay, fine, potentially, maybe, but the library is a public good. A public good is something that enters to the benefit of everyone equally, whether you, you know, pay directly for it or not, like fire service and EMS service, and there are just some things that I don't think work well when they get contracted out. And certainly, fire, if someone was talking about bringing OCFA in here, or someone was talking about bringing OC sheriffs in here, no, there are three things you don't mess with in Huntington Beach: our first responders, the fire department, the PD, and the library. So, I mean, even with six hundred and fifty thousand dollars potentially in savings, and I, and I don't buy, I'm sorry, I just don't buy the, the claim that they're gonna be able to save money while maintaining the same staff. The business model is that the staff do not get the same benefits. Otherwise, it won't pencil. Why would, why would anybody do that? They can't give them the same benefits. They don't, they're, they don't get a public pension, that's a big consideration for people. So I could completely see, and we had, I don't know how many librarians saying, librarians leave. They don't, professional librarians don't stay in these types of environments or situations. I don't think it's worth it. I don't think it's worth it, and so I'm not gonna even vote for the RFP. That's really, this is an unusual circumstance. I'm usually, always in favor of, you know, gathering more information, but to me, I feel like with what I learned from the staff, that's enough, and I don't think the staff needs to put any more time into this. So I'm not gonna support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kalnick.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the previous speakers and all the speakers that came out tonight to discuss what's been going on here. I think we have a major transparency issue. I don't even know how this got on our agenda. We had an unsolicited bid, and staff is making a recommendation based on research that got no council direction to come and present that we should go out and outsource our library and begin negotiations with our labor association. So I have, I am still trying to understand how this showed up on our agenda without a council vote saying, hey, let's go get some bids, which is an RFP process, or an H item saying, hey, we should go form an RFP. So it's, I find it confusing that staff would have a staff recommendation to go ahead and authorize an RFP because a company unsolicited came and said, we could save you a bunch of money. Their, the transparency in their proposal is sunshine and rainbows, I'm assuming. I haven't seen the proposal. The residents haven't seen the proposal. I have a document here that says not for public distribution, that's an analysis of it. The staff report is just go do an RFP. Like there should, we need to show our work to the residents. We had 1,000 emails, 100 speakers, like, we're not showing how we came to this conclusion, and therefore it is suspect. If we showed our work and said, hey, look, there's 25 other libraries that have outsourced, they've had a great time, here's our work on the math on how we get here, and when we get to the math, right? So, million dollars is the number that gets thrown around. $250,000 donation from the Friends of the Library disappears. $40,000 donation from Friends of the Children's Library disappears. So we've gotta claw that, we've gotta figure out how to plug that hole. The discussion earlier about we can increase services, which is something they'll always say. I think someone pointed out that in Escondido's contract, that they were gonna keep the libraries open on Sunday. A quick check of Escondido's website this evening is they are not open on Sundays. Increasing services would require us to not take the savings and plow that into plugging holes in our budget. These savings being plowed back into the library to increase services isn't, I don't believe that's being contemplated. If we're looking for savings in order to find budget savings, in order to balance our budget, you don't get increased services. Everyone's pension gets canceled the second they become a private employee. I want to be very clear on that. If you privatize the operations and management of the library and all the employees become employees of the same, at the same, transfer over to this other company, their public pension disappears. Some folks that started here maybe haven't invested in that pension, they've been paying into it. So you just stole money out of their pocket. For anybody that started with less than five years, they didn't invest. All these folks that gave their time and took a lower salary to come work in the public sector will lose their pension immediately. This council, I think, has forgotten that we are still the stewards of more than 1,000 employees in this city. Our job is to, in my opinion, is to make sure that they are happy in their jobs and that we are good employers to work for, and we want people coming here. We have 100-plus vacancies in this city currently. We, and we have a managed hiring process to even fill those vacancies. And now we're, we have a set of folks whose unions have come down and expressed concern about how we've operated in this realm. The fact that this showed up on an agenda and was rumors for months that somebody had submitted an RFP, or excuse me, submitted a proposal on January 23rd, and we didn't have the ability from a position to go and have a meeting with our unions, is wrong. We're not treating our folks here with, I think, upfront and integrity and the fact that Irvine is starting their own library system, and we're talking about moving folks that are gonna lose their pension, and Irvine's standing up their own system. I don't know if folks have been paying attention, but most of our executive staff now works for Irvine. We will see our librarians leave our city to continue having their pension in Irvine, and they will turn over to low-paid, non-union employees who will then quit after they find a better job somewhere else. Libraries are one of the last places in this country, in the world, in society, where you're not expected to spend money to be there. It is very, very unique in this society, that libraries and parks as well, and our beaches, you're not expected to spend money to be there. And I think some folks talked about doing their homework, and having a plug, a place to plug their laptop in, and a place to have internet, and you're not expected to buy a latte. I think that that's very, very important, to take something that literally gives things away for free, and try to make a profit doing that. Like, where does that come from? It comes from the employee pensions that we're no longer paying and decrease in services. When we're talking about the, the decrease in, the delta here we're trying to cut down on, I was talking to some of our librarians, and we just signed a contract for our ILS system for seven years. That was a pretty large contract. We just signed a contract for Overdrive, and my understanding is LSNS, if they were to, if they're the large one in the room and likely the one that submitted the proposal, we'd have to liquidate those because they don't use that system, is my understanding. I don't know if they're allowed to use the same different systems. My understanding is that as the, what, the fifth largest library system in the country, economies of scale have become important to cut that down, and if we're still paying a contract on a system that they don't use in their system, I feel like that delta gets even smaller and smaller. And at some point, we're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm happy to give up my council budget to save the library in that way. The council budget's something like $300,000 a year. If we're talking about folks losing, losing their pension and having to go to a private company to fix something that is not broken in here for cost savings. Like, there's things that are broken in our city that we need to fix. And to go and have to do that on the backs of our library, which is one of our, one of the things that most people are so profoundly attached to, their kids are attached to, their grandkids are attached to, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty wild to even start down that process. And again, like, I am all for trying to get the highest and best use for our assets in this city, and I think our libraries are already there. So those are my comments with regard to this. I still think that we have a major transparency problem. The public should be able to see this document, see the analysis that staff did to come to a conclusion that they did. We have some other problems with how we came to conclusions later on in the agenda as well, but those are my comments tonight, and I won't be supporting putting our libraries out to bid. And if it was an RFP, if, this should have been an RFI. This should have been a request for information to find out who's out there in the space. We've done this, we did this for CCA consultants, and we did this just recently for, I think I just sent this to staff, who was the other one we just did an RFI for? Oh, for the 311 system. We just did an RFI for that, because we didn't know who was in the space. And I think like 30 or 40 people responded to that. So if we weren't discussing actually outsourcing our libraries, we, this should have been a request for information to find out what else was available, and not a request for proposals that could be immediately turned into a contract. Thank you.
So, the city is approached by different organizations and companies to offer their services all the time. And sometimes, they come in, they offer their services with the potential to reorganize and save the taxpayers money. When they approach us, it would be irresponsible of us to not explore those options, at least look into them, which is what we're asking to do here. I'm sorry, look, like I said, you guys had your turn. It is ours now. Thank you. So we're trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and look into these options. What we're being told by some of the council members here is, yes, there might be potential, yes, it might work, but just don't do it because we don't like it. Doesn't mean we're gonna move forward with hiring this company or contracting, but it is our responsibility to look into these options. And that's where I'm at with this. Councilmember Moser.
Thank you. So, a couple of things. I think that first, this would be the opposite of what so many on this dais purport to uphold, which is local control. We would be releasing local control to a for-profit organization and giving up our public institution and the management of that public institution. I think that there is an issue with a lack of transparency. If anything, there should have been a study session discussing this. It would have been more appropriate to bring this forward, even if just for an RFP or a request for information, gathering more community input, even though obviously we got a lot tonight. I know that this is just an idea, but the goal to have created a We Love Our Libraries Month, only to turn around and look at selling that very library system out. Our library and its management should be owned, supported by our community, and should serve our community, not a for-profit company. Also, we're looking at honestly such a small savings here. What we were shared, what was shared with us in the analysis that we were given to in our briefings was an approximately a million dollar savings, but it did not include the donations from the Friends organizations. It did not include the over 300 volunteer hours, or not hours, volunteers who provide so many hours every month. It did not include the consideration about the Friends of the Library bookstore and things like that to raise money that goes back into the library system and to buying books. What it did do was it talked about the pros and cons, as our staff saw them so far, and that included lower pay and benefits for staff, which resulted in high turnover in all of the organizations that they researched and at least brought back to us. High turnover results in a lack of relationships with our librarians. We have so many who have these relationships, as we heard tonight, you know, Laura talking about doing storytime with the kids, and how they grew, and how they change, and how they come in and they see her, how they see their librarians, and they know each other. You will lose that if you take this investment away, and you give it away, and you sell it out to a private organization, because you won't have these librarians there. You're looking at at least two-thirds of the salary and no pensions. We need to take care of our workers. They are our community. We already have a bookstore in town. We should not be turning our library into another one. With what I've seen so far, we would get to keep the envelope, the building, and all of its costs, but we get to give away the gift inside. The thing that makes it special, unique, well-known, well-loved, award-winning, are librarians and our library staff, along with that. It was mentioned tonight that the library's budget is around $5 million. So, and it was also mentioned, as is true, that we have a very efficiently and well-run library. I took a look at a couple things with regards to the budget. One is just the number of employees. So, our library, our library and cultural services run with 29.25 FTE. Back in 2019 to 2020, it was 27.25, and it has been 29.25 every year since then. And they have done so much with so little. Did you know that for training dollars that they receive, they get $1,000 a year for the entire library system for training? We should be investing in our libraries. This is not the place that we should be cutting from. Our community is only, only benefits by the investment in our libraries. That being said, our librarians still find a way to do what they do because they are public servants, because they care deeply about their community, and they are responsive to their community's needs. Another thing that we discussed was that, I believe, at least LSNS would promise to keep the programs that the library has. Well, number one, they are selling a product and the service, and I understand that. But two, were they willing to keep them as they are right now, cemented in this moment? The whole idea of a community and public library is that they're responsive to the community. We heard, you know, you wouldn't own the library from 1976. We have changes all the time. Our librarians and our library system responds to the needs of our community, like the Makerspace, like Libby, like all of these types of things, like our other services that are provided. There's no guarantee that a for-profit company is going to come in, and maybe they'll keep what we have, but probably a shell of that, but they're not gonna continue to be responsive to the community. Their goal is for profit, and we already have no meat on these bones, and our librarians do an amazing job anyway. While looking at the budget, I also took a look at the city attorney's office budget. And we often hear how all of our litigation is free, but in looking at the city attorney's office budget, there was an increase of four FTE over one year, from 11 to 15, so that's a 36.3% increase in the number of FTE. And also, the budget itself went up almost a million dollars, an increase of 30.1% year over year. And for me, I think that we should invest in our libraries. And I don't think that this is the place where we should be cutting. And this 600,000 to a million dollars or what have you, I don't think is a reasonable divestment for our community. They want the investment in their librarians, and I feel the passion in every librarian that came up here. And I will close. God bless you. As we convene under the weight of decisions that will indelibly mark the narrative of our city, we face choices that threaten to steer our story even more into unsettling territory. Tonight, we deliberate over this item and 24, decisions that, if passed, may well cast us as the architects of a diminished future for Huntington Beach. A future where the pillars of freedom and public service crumble under the guise of progress. Among these critical choices is the proposition to privatize our award-winning public library, a beacon of knowledge, equality, and community, voted as one of the highest-rated departments in our most recent community survey. This library is not just a building with books. It is the heart of our city, pulsing with the lifeblood of our shared aspirations and dreams, and with the singing and humming of storytime from Ms. Carrie and Ms. Laura, saying, "Open, shut them, open, shut them." I was there for that recently. This represents a sanctuary of learning and a fortress against the encroachment of ignorance and division. To whomever might potentially be poised to support this measure tonight, I pose a stark question. Will we sell out our library, this jewel in the crown of Huntington Beach, to the highest bidder? Will we betray the trust and the investment our community has placed in this institution, recognized far and wide for its excellence in service? This is not merely a financial transaction. It is a measure of our commitment to the very soul of our city. To privatize our library is to relinquish control of a resource that has been and always should be, a testament to our investment in the collective growth and well-being of our community. The narrative we are in danger of writing tonight is one of shortsightedness and loss, a tale where the highest values of our community are auctioned off, leaving us impoverished in ways far beyond the fiscal. We stand at a crossroads between two diverging paths. One leads to a story of resilience, unity, and the uplifting power of public institutions. The other descends into a narrative of division, restriction, and the erosion of our public treasures. As custodians of Huntington Beach's legacy, the decision before us is profound. Will we be remembered as the council who sold out our most cherished institution, or as the champions who stood firm to protect and invest in the very fabric of our community? Let this council choose wisely, for the chapters we author today will resonate through the annals of our city's history. Let us not be swayed by short-term gains, but be guided by the enduring values that have made Huntington Beach. but be guided by the enduring values that have made Huntington Beach who we are on our best day. Our library and indeed our community deserves nothing less. In the story of Huntington Beach, let us not pen a cautionary tale of what was lost, but a celebratory narrative of what we chose to preserve, enhance, and bequeath to future generations. The legacy of our tenure, the story of our time, hinges on the choices that we make tonight on this dais. Thank you.
So, Councilmember. Councilmember Strickland made a motion to go with the staff recommendation. Did anybody second that yet? Mayor Protenburn seconded. So, vote called a roll.
All right. Councilmember Mosher?
No.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Hi.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Hi.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kelmick?
No.
The item passes for three.
Thank you.
City Attorney, I think that's uncalled for. Madam Chair, I suggest you remove people who shout out shame. It's unacceptable. It's totally unacceptable.
So I've asked that.
So I'm asking the sergeants to remove them from the room. It's totally unacceptable to yell out shame.
Anybody, first person that yells out on was subject to being removed.
No, no. I want, I want the people removed now. I want the people who were saying shout out shame to be removed. Because you've been, you've been already warned a couple of times today. That's unacceptable.
Okay, we're going on a five-minute recess. Okay, we're now going to reconvene the meeting. And hopefully, we can get this done in a respectful manner. Okay, next item. We're moving on to item number 23. Staff, please introduce your report.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This evening, we'll be discussing the city's fiscal year 2324 budget update as well as the mid-year budget adjustments. So just to provide a quick overview of the 2223 audited financial results. So I'm pleased to report that the city ended fiscal year 2223 with a $3.7 million general fund surplus after year-end transfers of $12.6 million to partially fund the city's unfunded liabilities, which include workers' compensation, general liability, and retiree supplemental, as well as our, as well as some of our unmet infrastructure needs. Just as a reminder, so the revenues that were available for transfers were primarily due to one-time spikes in natural gas revenue, due one-time spikes in natural gas prices during the winter of 2022 and '23, as well as due to increases in natural gas and electricity rates, which resulted in additional utility tax and franchise fee revenue above the adopted budget. Additionally, transient occupancy tax or TOT revenue remains strong, mainly due to higher-than-average daily rates, as well as a full fiscal year of TOT from the city's short-term rental program. Additionally, demand for emergency medical services continues to increase. So, moving to the 2324 outlook. So after 29 months of post-pandemic job growth in California, unemployment growth was flat in September of '23 and then declined in October of '23. So California consumers and businesses are spending less and now spending is shifting from taxable goods to non-taxable items. On a brighter note, property tax revenues, which are the city's largest general fund revenue source at almost 37%, remain strong with revenues projected to be slightly above the adopted budget due to increased supplemental property taxes. However, sales tax revenues, which are the city's second-largest revenue source at almost 19%, are projected to decline slightly by approximately $1.3 million, again, due to a shift in consumer spending from taxable goods, such as new car sales, due to the high-interest rate environment, to non-taxable items such as travel, leisure, as well as entertainment. Utility tax and franchise fee revenues are lower than prior year due to lower gas commodity prices. With all that said, the city is currently projecting to end the current fiscal year with a $2 million general fund surplus. Of course, this is still subject to change. So, looking at the city's long-term financial plan. So this includes the CalPERS return for fiscal year 2223 at 6.1%. So the revenues are broken down into three parts. So this includes recurring revenues, as well as one-time revenues, and the city's planned use of reserves for the current fiscal year, which includes the $4.9 million for use of AES reserves, as well as our one-time planned use of equipment replacement funds. We also have our expenditures, which, and then our recurring expenditures, our CalPERS UAL payment, and our pension obligation bond payments, as well as our one-time expenditures, and our restricted reserves as well. So one thing to note is our CalPERS UAL payment is increasing significantly in the out years and that is due primarily to our, unfortunately, due to the CalPERS negative 21.3% return in '21-'22, as well as the 6.1% return in '22-'23. Just as a reminder, CalPERS target rate of return is 6.8%. Oh, sorry, I was negative seven and a half percent. I apologize. So, so this is just something to keep in mind. So the city's Finance Department and City Manager's Office is working on a plan to address these future deficits. So looking at the CalPERS update, so as mentioned, so we have the fiscal year '21-'22 return of negative seven and a half and the '21-'23 return of 6.1%, which, as mentioned previously, does require escalating UAL payments by the city. So as a reminder, on June 26 of last year, council did proactively approve updates to the city's general fund reserve policy, which to strengthen the city's pension plan policy, which requires a minimum of 25% of any unrestricted one-time revenues to be transferred to the city's Section 115 trust to address CalPERS unfavorable returns so that we can proactively address future pension liabilities. So currently, the city's Section 115 trust balance as of June 30, 2023, is at $20.6 million. So just as a reminder, CalPERS investment policy does focus on long-term returns. And additionally, the pension obligation bonds that we did issue back in 2021 does remain financially advantageous as long as CalPERS long-term return is greater than 2.9%, which is the rate that we issued our pension obligation bonds at. So here's a quick snapshot of the city's unfunded liabilities, both as of 6/30/2022 and as of 6/30/2023. So this includes our workers' compensation, general liability, retiree supplemental, and CalPERS UAL. So I had already discussed the change to our CalPERS UAL, which again was due to the two years of unfavorable returns for CalPERS, due to CalPERS investments. For workers' compensation, we did have a large, some large incidents that did occur, which did raise our liabilities significantly. And we do have our premiums, which are anticipated to increase as well. Our general liability insurance premiums are also expected to increase as well as additional markets withdraw from California and also withdraw from writing public entity liability as well. So also as a reminder, the city is currently insured up to, self-insured up to $1 million. And then we have $25 million in excess coverage per claim. So the staff is currently closely monitoring the city's unfunded liabilities to identify cost savings opportunities on an ongoing basis. So then, moving on to the city's major budget adjustments for the current fiscal year. So we do have budget adjustments in two departments. So we are pleased to note that they are completely net neutral, which means that we do have offsetting revenues to cover all of these, to cover all of our budget requests. So these would all be net neutral. So the Community and Library Services Department has a request for $246,000, which is to cover increased demand for contract class instructors, which would be offset by recreational and art class revenues, again, for a net zero impact. And the Fire Department has two requests. So one for $480,000, and this would be for fire strike team reimbursement costs, which would be for out-of-town fires and incidents for which we would be reimbursed by the state, again, for a net zero impact. And then we also have a request for $117,000 for medical and safety supplies, for city ambulances, for our EMS program, which would be offset by corresponding EMS revenues, again, for a net zero impact. So the total adjustments would be for $843,000, which would all be offset by, which would be completely offset by additional revenues. So we do have one other adjustment, which would be for a grant, and it's for our local roads and safety grant in Public Works. And it's for $7,350. And that's to allocate the remaining awarded state grant funds for the development of a local road safety plan. So a total of $147,000 was awarded at the time. However, only $139,650 was, had been appropriated to current date. So staff is just requesting appropriation of the remaining grant funds. So this is purely administrative. So again, there are offsetting grant revenues. So this would again be completely net zero. So here's a summary of the mid-year budget requests. So again, just as a reminder, this is completely revenue neutral. So there would be no additional cost to the city. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Bolton?
Thank you for all the work on this, Ms. Hahn. I just have a couple of questions about slide 10, if you could go back to that. So the emergency medical service revenues, can you explain what that is?
Yes. So, so the Fire Department has an emergency medical services program, which is basically our ambulance services program. And so with that, we do have ambulance operators, which go out and do calls for service primarily. You know, actually, we do have, I believe Chief McCoy here could probably explain the program better than I could. So maybe I'll defer to Chief McCoy.
For sure. Thank you. So it's our EMS fees. So anytime we go on a medical aid, it's the ambulance transport fees. A lot of that is reimbursed by Medicare or Medi-Cal. That's what we've been talking a lot about, the PPGMT. That's what we've been talking a lot about, the PPGMT and the different reimbursements that we get from the state.
Okay. For the current fiscal year, Ms. Hahn, how much has the city collected in revenues for EMS? Because if I understand what you're what you have on your slide correctly, we are able to purchase offset the cost of purchase of supplies with the revenue that we get from EMS service?
Yes, that's correct. So, to date, we have received close to seven point seven million dollars in EMS billing services.
That's good to know, thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
I would just like to move the staff recommendation for AMB.
Second. Councilmember Kalmick.
I just one of the speakers, actually, two of the speakers brought up. Brought up something that, again, is we've had multiple study sessions on over the time. I want to go back to slide seven, talking about the pension obligation bond. One of the early speakers stated the previous council sold a bunch of bonds at seven percent. That's not accurate, refinanced debt at nine point two five percent or two point nine five, two point nine two five percent, correct?
Yes.
And that's reflected on the previous slide under the POB payments, correct? Go back a slide, everybody. Had we not sold those bonds at two point nine two five percent, our UAL payment because of CalPERS's lack of performance would be much greater?
It would most likely be so.
Okay. The other issue brought up again was Elon and Breakwater, the private bond floating for the purchase of those properties where we forego property tax for a period of time. We don't lose that money. We get that money back at the end when we either sell the property or refinance them at some point, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so I just wanted to say we haven't lost it. We have forgone it for a limited period of time. And at the end of that debt, we receive two properties that will likely be in excess of half a billion dollars to forego fifteen million dollars over the course of twenty or thirty-something years, so.
It's actually twenty-one million they are foregoing, but.
Okay, but to get
Just want to make sure.
Six hundred million at the end of that.
In what condition?
But it's over
That's a big assumption.
But it's over thirty-something years, so it's a Can I have the floor, please?
Oh, you just
No, I understand, but let me let me finish what I say, and then you're welcome to rebut that, but don't interrupt as I'm going along.
Sure.
Can we have somebody in AV fix the feedback here, please?
And just a word of caution that we stay on agenda.
Excuse me?
Stay a word of caution that we stay on agenda.
Right, but this is the budget, right? And it's bills the budget, so. It's it's a yeah. It's on one of the speakers here. Is that better? It's a little better, okay, no, anyway. The point is that that's not lost revenue, that there is ample opportunity to recoup that. And we had a long study session and several meetings talking about that at some point. So, those are the two points for this, I'm it's already been moved and seconded.
Yes. Are we ready to vote? Nobody else? Okay, please call the vote.
Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kalmick? Did you say aye? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you, moving on to ordinances for introduction. Number twenty-four, staff, please introduce your report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. On October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, city council approved resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-one establishing a policy for the review and re-cataloging of library materials containing sexual content. Before you this evening is a request for approval for introduction of ordinance number four-three-one-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Huntington Beach, amending the Huntington Beach municipal code by adding a new chapter, two point six-six, entitled Community Parent Guardian Review Board for for procurement of children's library materials as referenced in resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one or forty-one. The updated ordinance includes definitions of terms such as children's books, sexual content, sexual references, and community standards, outlines the board's purpose and composition, the minimum meeting frequency, the appropriate use of city council annual allocated funding, and board duties. As previously mentioned, the municipal code explains that each council member as part of their the board's composition may appoint up to three community members to this board. Should this item moves move forward, please begin to identify your appointees. At this time, city staff are available to any answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a lot of questions.
Councilmember Kalmick.
Thank you. Now my mic, can anybody are we? They can't hear me. I'm happy to go down to the podium. Is that better? Yeah, all right. Okay, so, reading through the ordinance. I honestly, the principal reason for the ordinance was to have a committee of parents and guardians, is my understanding, review books. Plain and plain and simple, not to remove books that are in the library, which this doesn't appear to do. But this does appear to stop books from coming into the library. So, there's some internal consistencies that I find, and I have questions for any of staff on this from a either legal standpoint or a policy standpoint. So, I guess I'll start with section two-six-six dash one-zero-zero. Talks about donating books that don't make the cut. And we'll go back and kind of talk about that piece in a second, but we're buying things with our tax dollars, and then we're asking to and we're either going to donate them or sell them. Are we, I guess we can sell library books, we do that for other things. But we're buying brand-new books that don't make the cut, we got twenty-one of them likely. And we have to donate them. Do we have an issue with gift to public funds? That was kind of the thing that popped into my head. We can we can give books away, we can buy them, give books away?
We we can, but if you don't mind, if you could, which section are you looking at again?
Two point six-six dot one-zero-zero.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, where it's basically, it talks about all efforts will be made to sell or donate non-approved children's books to libraries outside the city of Huntington Beach. So, I don't know, just we're it appears that we would be buying books for somebody else's library, and that doesn't seem like within something that we should be doing. But I guess we have to figure out something to do with those books. So, I asked the question of staff is how many books do we currently we probably buy a year? And it was like sixty-three hundred books. I'm assuming that this committee is going to try to meet semi-annually, but to review that many books, and I can guess they can just look at a list. But then we get into some of the internal comprehensive internal inconsistencies. So, we're reviewing, I mean, section one-one-zero, two dot six-six dot one-one-zero says, "Review all books proposed for procurement by the city to determine by a majority vote." I'm assuming that means that all the entire list of sixty-two hundred books is only going to be done every six months. How does that, what's the kind of thought process as we move forward here? How we're going to be actually reviewing the large number of books that books and other media that we procure?
Would you like me to comment? Okay. So, there's a few of us involved in the development of the ordinance.
Your mic on?
Yeah, it is. Am I? Good, okay. So, if you got to read the ordinance in totality, right? So, it talks about reviewing all, but then if you go to subsection B, it talks about the library presenting the full list of potential books to the committee. The committee will then select or pull books for review. So, all will be presented to the committee, at least by list. And then if there are books to be candidate books to be reviewed, they will be pulled, and they will be reviewed. So, let's say there are, did you say six thousand books?
Sixty-two hundred pieces of media.
So, there may only be a hundred books pulled from that list total over the course of the year and reviewed. This is just hypothetical.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. But like, how would they determine that the book needs to be pulled or not pulled?
Committee members just decide.
No, no, but like, based on the title, like literally judging a book by its cover?
Well. There there are all kinds of reviews. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and pontificate about
No, I'm just trying to understand the process.
They they the committee can decide that. You know, they can say, look, there is there are resources out there for reviews. I've read the reviews, this is a book I want to pull. Somebody may not look at reviews, and they may say, hey, my neighbor told me about this book. This is a book I want to pull. I mean, there's all kinds of reasons, ways.
I'm just trying to understand, like, the the entire list gets presented, somebody has an objection to one of them that gets is this, are these in large tranches? How I don't know, what's the process by which we currently buy books? Is it monthly, daily, weekly?
My my understanding of the procurement process is it depends. So, some books are just based on popularity of a certain author. Those typically are on auto send. Some other books are procured based on popularity of a topic. So, monthly, though, the librarians do go through and review the collection and then review what books are available for procurement, and then they make those choices.
So, then the processes, the book list gets presented at least forty-five days before the it meets. And then there's a ninety-day period of clearance after that by which any member can pull that book. So, it sounds like we've got this timeline here that's kind of stretching out the ability to procure books. Yeah, that's just going to be a function of having this committee. Okay. I think that's something good to understand. The staff report has no budget analysis in here. I think that's a problem for this this board, this council, to make a decision based on having no idea what this is going to cost. If they pull a hundred books, we got to buy, I'm assuming, twenty-one copies of those books to review. Ten, ten book, I could buy, pull a thousand books, I don't know. Like, I mean, if we're getting into the young adult section, that gets into some deep detail with regard to some of the criteria that are set are a little nebulous. So, you have no ballpark on budget? It's just they're going to come and ask for budget after we create the committee? Effectively?
Correct. At this at this point, we would work in collaboration with the city attorney's office and the board for additional direction.
So, we're going to write another blank check to another thing. So, the other thing we haven't gotten into is the electronic collection. I've asked this a couple of times and still not got an answer. So, we have a massive electronic collection that includes things that would likely be kicked out based on this. How are we going to handle that? Because there are collections of books that are not technically in our library, but there are access to resources from the California Public Library system, the whole Libby library. Are we just going to not allow those for kids for people under the age of eighteen?
That system is a little more technical, and so I'm still, we're working with Libby to better understand how to facilitate that process based on the direction of the board.
What about the New York Times subscription? Or the National Geographic subscription that has, I'm assuming, native folks that don't dress like European or North American folks? We're just, are we going to, are they going to lose that New York Times subscription?
At this time, I'm uncertain how to answer that question, so.
Anybody?
That would have to come from the committee at some point after.
But that's not a book. So, this says to review children's books, but this would be something that the committee didn't necessarily have purview over, which is the other resources in the library that are available to folks that are under eighteen. So, are they going to pull, I mean, is someone going to review every issue of National Geographic? Or every issue of New York Times? Like, this is where we start to get down into turtles all the way down, and we start to run into, I think, some issues with folks not getting access to things that they can access regularly places. And potentially, we end up in getting into the C-word. How do we end up? How do we rationalize this? So, effectively, I mean, there is no definition of parent or guardian either. I mean, that's also a huge problem. Like, is it stepparents? Is it parents that don't, maybe they don't have kids anymore for a horrible reason? Are they still a parent? Were a parent at the time, like, who qualifies to be put on this committee?
Whoever you choose.
But what if they're not a parent?
You're appointing them.
Sure, but the criteria says a parent or guardian.
Okay, you're appointing them. It's your discretion. I mean, you want us to bind your decision-making with an ordinance?
Sure.
I don't think so, you're the council. They're your appointees.
So, the and somebody actually flagged the definitions here for sexual content and sexual references should probably be related to humans. Because, I mean, I could see somebody, you know, there's books about other animals in our library that are similar to humans that we probably that would probably meet this criteria. But again, like, it's extremely vague, and I think this opens us up to moving removing a lot of books. The fact that we are removing books, not remove books, stopping books from coming into the library. There's a lot of synonyms for that. One of them tends to be that we are censoring them from entering the library. And I know that last time we discussed this, that there's a legal definition of censorship. I went and looked it up, and it seemed to be prohibiting someone from accessing something. How do we, again, square that with municipal code section two dot three-zero dot three-zero, when it says the director of community and library services will present this list of books for a group of people to not allow them into our library?
Councilmember, we we let we prohibit or screen out thousands of books from coming into our library all the time, or otherwise, we would have about thirty million copies of books in our library.
Right.
Librarians have been doing that for years.
Through an objective process, though, right?
And that's what the community board is for.
Is it objective?
Well, I mean, you know, we can, we can, look, the the bottom line is to suggest that what the ordinance proposes is somehow nefarious and illicit, while the librarians have been doing this for years on their own.
But they're trained professionals.
So, that makes censorship okay at your definition?
It's not censorship at that point. Because you're having a subjective, like, eh, I don't feel you. Somebody even brought up the example moments ago about, well, a neighbor says they don't like this book, and we're going to go and review it based on a subjective, very squishy definition of of that, and then not allow it to come into our library. Doesn't if it was just, okay, this shouldn't go in the children's section, it'll be in the adult section, we're having a different conversation. But the fact that it will be passed over and not allowed into our library, I think, and especially just for children's books, which will go all the way to eighteen-year-olds, so that's the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds that, again, I hit an edge case here of like, a single mom who's an emancipated minor, who's got a kid and wants to go get a book on potty training, can't go check that book out from the library. And so, I I think that this is going to hamstring our ability to stock our children's library. I think we've just added a huge layer of bureaucracy and government. Again, I feel like I'm the libertarian here on this council trying to limit government's intervention into our daily lives. And I can't support this ordinance. I think it's too confusing and it's way too squishy. And the fact, the key fact here, that all decisions of this board are final and non-appellable, and the fact that it says earlier in the chapter that the decisions of this board can be reviewed after a year. I don't quite reconcile that. But board, so the board can appeal its own decisions? Can be brought back? Okay, that's, again, that's not quite clear. But I don't know why this council would give up its authority on what goes in our public library to a board of unelected folks. I think this is the same argument that some folks used about SCAG and how SCAG is not a great organization because it's a board of unelected folks. It's not appealable, but now we're going to create a board here that is appointed political folks with no background in under, other than being a parent, to help parent what my child can read. Because we had a speaker that showed this book and actually emailed us earlier in the day about twenty-five minutes before the meeting. So, I apologize to that speaker for not getting back to them so quickly. A cultural book that showed naked women, he said, the gross parts of the woman, which I think speaks a little bit to the analysis of that book, and asked, would I let my, would I read that? I would absolutely read that with my four-year-old. That's a story about a child experiencing Japanese culture. But the goal is that you read that with your child. And that book, I'm guessing, based on that standard and likely the exemption for letting folks serve on multiple boards, will not be in our library, will be in the adult section. If it was a new book coming in, would be prohibited from entering our library. That's somebody deciding, that's somebody else's parent. I don't even know if that speaker has children or not, but that's somebody else deciding what my child can read in our library. That's not what I think our library should be about. Our library should have as many books in it as possible, should have those thirty million. We'd be so lucky to have the thirty million books in our library. And I make the decision for my child what I want to choose and read with it. I'd love my child to be a well-rounded person who understands that there are naked people in this world, and there's a culture that's people in this world, and there's a culture that's not in this country, that has more nudity than we do here. I don't know if folks have been to Europe, but they have naked people on regular broadcast television there, but they don't allow smoking on TV. So, like, there's just, there's cultural differences throughout the world here, and for us to kind of impose those on our residents, I think, is kind of wild. And the fact that we're willing to give up any appeals process to a board of political appointees seems kind of wild. And the fact that if we disagree with them, and we kill everybody on that board and replace them with everybody, with new people, that it would be a year before they could review that book again. So, we've locked ourselves into a year, the relief valve, I don't know, I could just see this turning real bad where a new council could appoint some folks, and they're like, "Well, you know, we don't think the Bible should be in the library, and we're not going to buy that this year." And then we have a whole problem where we're going to have to repeal some ordinances and get there. The relief valves in this ordinance do not exist, and I think that all laws should have some sort of relief valve as society changes and as councils change, and this locks this in, and I think will break our children's library. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Moser?
Thank you. I think Councilmember Kelmick went through quite a bit of this. For me, a lot of the problems, well, I don't think this should be happening, number one, but a lot of the problems are in the definitions. Even just from the get-go, "children" means persons under the age of eighteen. Again, that on its, by itself, breaks the library. Because that means that there are books that could be taken out, or materials, like, for instance, a newspaper or something like that, where high school students, you know, they were talking earlier about doing MUN prep, right? Like, they could be reading things that are college-level, but now they don't get to? I don't understand that. Children's books is not, children are not children who are eighteen and under, or under eighteen in the library. You have children's literature, and you have young adult literature. And I think that we should acknowledge that in this ordinance, because children are not under eighteen. There are different, different ways to define children's literature versus young adult literature. And if you look at even the Library of Congress has the Children's and Young Adults Cataloging Program. Like, why aren't we utilizing some type of precedent or best practice instead of creating our own thing? Because, while you might consider somebody is not able to vote, so therefore, they're a child, we're talking about something different. We should be talking about it within the confines of how it is defined for its cataloging purposes, and we're not doing that. So, that's number one. We're also not really defining the community standard, or we're allowing whoever we appoint, or I will not be appointing anyone, to be on that board. So, it's really not determining the community standard, it's just these few people. Same thing with sexual content and sexual reference. It's not providing, really, it's just so broad that you are potentially removing so many different books from the library, again, that are things like about people's bodies, you know, or maybe not removing them from the library, but moving them to a restricted section of the library, or perhaps disallowing them from entering the library at all. In Section 2.66.030, Purpose, at the very end, it talks about whether those books require parental consent and are to be placed in the adult's section of the library. So, just to be clear, I don't even know what the adult's section of the library is, other than not the children's section. So, is the whole rest of the library the adult's section? Mine is, like, the boat?
So, the defining line was, this is modeled after the resolution that council passed, so, under eighteen, over eighteen?
Right, but I just asked a different question, as far as this actual physical location in the library. So, if it's not in the children's section, it's, the rest of the library is the adult's section?
And that's going to be up to implementation. I mean, I don't...
Well, I mean, you're participating in this, right? I'm sorry.
I've, yeah, prepared the ordinance.
You wrote the ordinance, so that's why I'm asking you.
I would defer to Ashley.
At this time, we're working to place any books that are recataloged up onto the fourth floor of the library. So, depending on space availability, we would have to continue to manipulate the library catalog collection.
So, a question for you, just, just an exercise. It's my understanding, as a parent of teens who have read young adult literature, that most young adult literature, if it's reviewed, would not be appropriate based upon this, and would likely be moved to a restricted section. So, what I foresee happening, I'm not really asking a question, is that the, basically, what used to be the teen section would likely completely be moved to the fourth floor in our central library, let alone what happens in all the branch libraries. You know, I went over to Oak View and took a look at, you know, it's a small, it's a small library branch. They do a lot with very little. And, you know, I looked at where things would likely go, and how they were going to try to kind of watch things, and like, you know, this is very difficult in practice. And again, young adults are not children, and you're going to end up, this board will end up moving, really, probably like a hundred percent of the young adult books to the fourth floor. You know, and this council can do what it would like, but this ordinance, as it is written, if this board chooses to proceed with these reviews, will likely completely decimate the young adult section of our library, which I guess is not a young adult section because it's in the adult's section. So, our children, who are teenagers, will not have access to books that they should have access to, which is restriction and which is censorship. Moving on to the, just the meetings. I think it's really important, since these are Brown Acted meetings, and I'm looking at the precedent of our Planning Commission meetings, you know, and our City Council meetings. I think these are meetings that are going to be of great interest to the entire community. And I think that, I don't know if those other meetings say within their, in their ordinance or bylaws whether they will be, or how they will be broadcasted, but I think it's very important that there be full sunshine and transparency on these meetings. And I would recommend some type of an amendment here to the meeting section that these will be filmed and broadcast live, like a Planning Commission or City Council meeting, recorded for later review, and published in all the same places that all of our live broadcast meetings are right now, on all of the different social media platforms. So, the entire community can have access to the discussions, and so they can better understand what the community standards are for them. And finally, with regards to the timing of things, so if I'm looking at this, and it says in part, the duties, 2.66.110, Section B, "The Director of Community and Library Services, or his or her designated, will submit a list of children's books intended for purchase at least forty-five days before the date of any board meeting." So, as I understand it right now, the board meetings are likely to be twice a year. So, forty-five days before a meeting, maybe there wasn't another meeting from six months prior. So, the librarians get their list together, they provide that forty-five days prior, then the board meets, or the committee meets, then they have another ninety days, and then maybe they'll take it up. If they don't take it up within a year, then it will be considered approved. So, we're looking at books, right now, I think our librarians try to get books in pretty regularly, and in a timely manner. And those that access those books, you know, they might hear about a certain book somewhere and want to see it in their library, and they'll see it, you know, in advance that that one's on order, and that it's new for the library. So, now, we're looking here at potentially a new book not coming into the library that should be perfectly fine, even based upon these community standards, for maybe a year. I can't imagine that we would want that type of, that type of impact to our library, that we would have books that are stale, essentially, right? Or, we wouldn't have access to books that are, you know, new, relevant, and that people are in demand. Because, I don't know how this committee is going to actually do its job in any timely way with the sheer number of books it's going to need to potentially review. And even if it chooses not to do that, you have, really, it's about six months to a year, where right now, I imagine that those books are coming in within, I don't know, what would the timeframe be, Ashley, generally? I know it ranges, but...
Sure. I, not being somebody who orders the books, I would assume it happens fairly regularly, within four to six weeks of purchase.
And also, as somebody mentioned earlier, from the county system, I know we're not that, but I imagine it's similar, then it's regularly, this is happening at least monthly. Every two weeks, I hear. Okay. So, essentially, we're breaking our library purchasing system, and we are degrading the service to our, our library users and to our children. And I don't know what can be done about that, but it seems to me like this is not workable in a working library. So, I don't know if you can go, you know, back and fix it, but this doesn't work.
Well, it's up to the city council. As I said, this is modeled after the resolution that was passed. This one is, the ordinance is just a basic framework. So, it says at least twice a year. Depending on the books that are proposed, and communications between the director and the committee, they may decide to meet once a month. They could meet even more often. So, this is just a basic framework.
So, they're all in retirement, I guess. I mean, like, there's a lot of action happening here, is my point. Like, these are not employees. We're looking at employees who are professionals making decisions, who want to provide access to books that are new to their readers. And I know you're just doing what the council said, but, you know, in practice, things don't always work the way we initially proposed. So, now, we're looking at, in practice, and this ordinance is going to directly impact the purchasing and the service level, and the availability of all books that are coming in new to our library. And I think that it's, I think this council needs to be responsive to that. If you're cool with it, then I guess move along. But I think that, I would hope that anybody on this dais would not be okay with that. Because regardless of what you think should be moved, restricted, what the community standard should be, I imagine that you, you've said, I watched your videos, that you love our libraries. And I think that, that being said, you'd want the books to be current, and this is not going to allow for that. So, my recommendation to the council, then, is to provide direction to the city attorney and community and library services director to go back and fix this section, at the very least. And again, the final and non-appellable section is, I've not seen that anywhere else. And that wasn't part of the council request, that it was final and non-appellable. So, that was added.
Yeah, so, there are some portions of this that are sensitive to the law. They weren't specifically policy, but when it comes to the community standards requirement under the Millet test and some of the other cases, the idea is that when the community standards have spoken via the committee, the review board, and that decision's made, if there was ever a legal challenge, at least the decision rests with the community board. If it ends up being appealed to the city council, and then a court then reviews that as a political decision, then you lose essentially that community standards basis or that shield under some of the cases. So, that's why that's in there. And so, again, you know, it's up to council what you want to do with the language of the ordinance. This is based on, as I said, prior policy, plus with some mechanisms built in from case law.
Well, I'm not going to be supporting this at all. But I would hope that whoever is, could consider adding what I recommended, which is one, to go back and kind of figure out what that timing issue is with purchasing, making sure that these are live broadcast meetings, and really consider the definition of children and young adult as it pertains to literature, and not just like a voting age. Thank you.
Councilmember Bolton?
So, I'll ask the city attorney, since you're the person who drafted the ordinance. In the course of your research, did you find any ordinances like this, similar to this, that other cities or jurisdictions might have adopted, that have been tested in court?
So, I have my attorney here, Connor Highland, who put a lot of work into this, including a lot of the research that led up to it. Paul DeLisandro, I will say, from my office, also put a lot of work in. He's not here tonight. I'm going to defer to Connor on anything that led up to some of these legal, I guess, points in the ordinance. So, I don't know, Connor, if you have any comment?
This ordinance wasn't specifically based on any other city's ordinance. The majority of other cases that are binding on us deal with the direct removal of books. So, this was a balance of executing the council's policy decision, as well as trying to put us in the best foot forward to reduce the city's liability. This is one of, we tried to look at the least restrictive measures of accomplishing the council's goal. So, if the council's goal was to remove children's books from the library, one of the least restrictive measures was placing it in a different section of the library. Other cities and school districts have chosen to remove it, or do things like remove it from the online catalog, things that we do not recommend and have not included here, as that would basically make it impossible to find a book. So, we want to make sure that they're still findable, and ultimately, that if a parent decides that the book is right for a child, it is accessible to them.
Okay, thank you. So, it's, you're not saying there's no legal risk associated with this? Because I think there is a lot.
Well, I'm, you know, I never comment publicly on legal risk. I think this is a good ordinance. I think it's defensible ordinance. And I think it's consistent with all the case law research that we've done.
Well, I will say, and I had said this, I think, when we first started talking about this some months ago, we'll have to agree to disagree about that, Mr. Gates. So, I will say, for the record, the following actions have been found unconstitutional by courts at the federal and state level. Regulations that suppress, disadvantage, or impose differential burdens upon speech because of its content. Removing a children's book to the adult's section of a public library, and moving books to a place in a library where they are visible, but requiring a child to get parental permission in order to check out the book. The following books have been removed from libraries and returned by courts to their rightful place in libraries. Harry Potter and the Sorcerer's Stone, Catch-22, Slaughterhouse-Five, Oliver Twist, The Merchant of Venice, and the King James Version of the Bible, which was actually, that attempt was actually in California way back in 1924. A hundred years from now, certainly, people might look back, just like we do now, and say, "Oh, my God, I can't believe that some library tried to remove the King James Version of the Bible." But they did. It was a First Amendment and a Speech and Establishment Clause issue. But I think that we are going to be on the wrong side of history. Again, Charles Dickens, Shakespeare, taken out of a library, and a court has to tell the library to put the books back in? This is just, it's indefensible, and it's unconscionable. The, I do want to make also one other point with respect to the difference between what this board is going to do and what librarians do. So, librarians do not use their own personal likes or dislikes when they make book selections, if I understand correctly what's been described in this meeting and in previous meetings. If they use criteria like what is in demand, topic-wise, and which authors are the most popular, it doesn't sound to me like they're going to say, "Oh, well, but I hate that author," so... so I'm not going to order that. And it doesn't sound to me like they would say, well, that topic includes the gross parts of women, so I'm not going to order that. I don't think their personal perspectives or likes or dislikes plays a role in their selection process. So I don't agree with the assertion that what librarians do is the same as what this board is going to do. What librarians do is not censorship. And nobody has ever, I've never heard anybody say that what librarians do when they are putting a collection together is censorship in the way that courts have described censorship in a First Amendment context. So I won't support the ordinance at all. I don't think there's anything that can be done. With all due respect to you, Connor, I appreciate all the work that you put into it. I just don't think that there's a way to do this without, you know, having the ACLU at our front door, or, you know, allowing someone to set up a cottage industry and just, you know, sue the Honey, sue, sue the city of Huntington Beach on a regular basis and earn a very nice living. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
I kind of envisioned this happening a little differently. My attitude is, we get, trust the librarians to pick the books, but they got to be given some guidelines, that they're not going to have full reign to just fill it up, put whatever books there are that come across their desk. But just to apply, we give them, they get given some guidelines, use their expertise to know what the parameters are, and, and if there's questionable books, then they give them to the committee. It's, it, it kind of, it's just common sense. And I really only envision this committee seeing about six books, maybe a year, once it gets really going and we sort out the guidelines and things. But then you trust the librarians, and if it gets repeated, then you just, we drop the guidelines. It's pretty simple. And everybody should just follow the simple common sense, that there are certain things we don't give to kids or put in our library. We don't have the how-to guide to do a school shooting. We don't have Hustler or Penthouse. There's all kinds of things that we don't, it's common sense, we don't need that in our public library. And there's certain books that really, through our guidelines, that it's common sense that we don't really, we're asking them not to be put in there. And I don't think that's a big, difficult reach to say, be a little more diligent and please respect the guidance we give. Pardon me, I don't know what that is. I haven't read it.
I'm going to.
If it was removed, it wasn't by this council, though. It was by the librarians, and if they chose to move it, that was on them. I don't know what to tell you about that. We haven't given any kind of, or committee, or anybody. Again, I resort to, we come up with some guidelines, it's simple, trust the librarians to follow the guidelines and use common sense. And then, if there is something that comes across that gets into our, into the library, hopefully, they see it when it comes there and it gives, they, they pass it through the, to the committee. It's, to me, we, I can't imagine more than five, six books, when this thing gets going and the guidelines get put forward, it's, I, call me, call me Pollyannaish, but it's just a real quick one. And I'm not talking potty or puberty. I'm talking about teaching an eight-year-old how to give fellatio and stuff.
For the audience that can't see the book, this is The Care and Keeping of You, the Body Book for Girls. And I believe, what was, where did this start out? Does anybody know where, this started on the children's section, and this is one of the books that was now in the, okay, now in the adult section. Okay. But, but the standard is sexual content, though. The, the ordinance provides the standard that the librarians are supposed to use.
We can give them new guidelines. They can be given guidelines. We all have bosses, we all have to find, follow, we have the Brown Act that we have to follow. They can follow certain other guidelines that are given. It's, to me, it's just common sense. As a policeman, I had, I had tons of laws that I was restricted by. Training bulletins, general orders, command officers' decisions. I was restricted, but when I was out on the street, it was me. I had to make those decisions on, in the nanosecond half the time, when it came down to it. But I still had those guidelines to answer to. It was, to me, it was, this is not a tough one. This is not, common sense, respect for the guidelines, and respect for our community and our library. I don't find it difficult. I'm, but, go ahead.
If I could just say one thing to the guidelines, is that's what I asked for at the last council meeting, were guidelines, because there aren't any here.
But I don't, I, I think the guidelines should be before it ever comes to committee. The guidelines are way before committee.
So, two things. So I do agree. So they, they have their guidelines and they have their professional expertise, and also, you know, part of the things that have been said in the past is that obscenity and pornography has been in our library, I've heard that said. That can't be transferred across state lines and into our library, that would be illegal. So that's not happening right now. You could question, for instance, if somebody has the location of a book like Gender Queer, which is in the adult section, which used to be in the young adult section. So that, that is a discussion that can be had. And the librarians had that discussion, as did the book publishers, and that is what determined, based on objective standards, where that went. When they purchased books, they, they're not looking at obscene books, they perhaps might be looking at where they would go, and based upon, like, this book says eight and over, this book says 10 and over. So they're making decisions based upon things like that. Those are their guidelines, those are their objective standards that they're looking at. Again, we already had a system in place where somebody could say, I don't think that book should be there, right? Which was the, the review form that a, a parent or somebody in the library could choose to pull a book. The librarian and/or whomever would look at that book, decide if it, if it should be reviewed further, and then they would either move the book or keep it where, where it is. That's happened, like, I think, eight times in the last seven or eight years. And I think only one time has a book been moved. The other times, they were kept where they were. So we're, we're doing a lot here, and I appreciate that you're saying, trust the librarians, they should follow their guidelines. I think that they were. And if there are particular, there, there, I don't have a master's in library science. So the guidelines that they're provided in their work, in their expertise, and also by publishers, frankly. And again, if, if somebody doesn't like where something is, there was something there to say, I disagree, and I would like this even reviewed or moved, versus having a committee of 21 people, pausing, stopping, delaying, you know, the purchase of books, because that is what this ordinance is doing. I hear you saying that you would rather it not do all of that, that you didn't think it would, I, that's what I hear you saying, you didn't think it'd have the impact potentially. You were thinking maybe five or six books would be reviewed, maybe they'd be moved somewhere, but what's happening in practice here, from what it sounds like, is not that. There is going to be a massive impact to the library, I think maybe beyond what you thought.
I'll just say one, I, believe me, I don't think this is a tough order. It's common sense, and we're negligent, really, as a body, that we haven't provided any guidelines. And if we disagree with what they bought, that's on us. It what's, if it's gotten put in, it's on us as a management or leadership in this policy direction or whatever we do, it is on us for not giving those guidelines. And now, we're going to come up, we should come up with some guidelines, so it follows the, the leadership, this dais.
Do we give the police their standards, or are they given that based upon other, I'm, I'm asking you as a police officer? I mean, I know that there are certain things where we would definitely have some opinion and policy decisions based upon that. But in general, there's standards, right, that are followed?
Yes.
Based upon, okay. So you're given those laws, guidelines, things like that? Through your?
Well, through the laws and through general orders, training bulletins, there's a whole list of different things that guide the performance of what you're supposed to do and held accountable to.
Okay. So I imagine that librarians going through their master's program, et cetera.
No, I'm, there's still got to be city policies.
Absolutely, and we have city policy already, prior to this ordinance, which is what I was saying.
All right.
Based upon the Miller Test as well, right, which doesn't require all of this.
I'm the city clerk. We, it looks like we're going to go past the 11.
Very good, mayor. You, you caught that. All right, so would somebody like to move that we're going to conduct business after?
I move that we conduct business after.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, let's take a vote. Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kelmick?
No.
All right, the motion passes 6-1. Councilmember Kelmick, no. Thank you for catching that.
So I have a couple of questions. I'm not going to go on forever, there's really no need to. But I do have to say that I think it's ridiculous to compare Shakespeare and the Bible to books that I know for a fact, or in the children's section that teach them how to masturbate, or teach little girls to stick their fingers in their vagina with KY jelly to stretch themselves, or the vulgar words for a penis or a vagina. And I have those books in my library, in my office, that I checked out from our library in the children's section, so please don't argue with me when it comes to that. Councilmember Kelmick, you said you want to limit the government. The government is, is running our libraries right now. What we're trying to do is to bring the parents into the equation. And then you wrote this op-ed, you're kind of like the gift that keeps on giving when you say something, because I read this, and, you know, I have a lot of respect for parents. It's not easy to be a parent. We juggle, and we wear a lot of different hats, but when you say something like, the ordinance is being introduced to formally create a committee of 21 amateurs. Parents are not amateurs, and it doesn't take a whole lot of talent to read a child's book. Parents can use common sense if they read this book and say, hey, it's not a good fit for the children's section, it's not a good fit for our library. Then you go on to say, not allowing certain books to be acquired by the library is banning. Our librarians do that all the time. Are you going to accuse them of being professional book banners? I'm trying to bring the community into this so that they also have a say into what goes into our libraries. Then you go on to say, why would a city council transfer authority from highly trained librarians to a board of unelected amateurs whose only qualification is being a parent or a guardian? We have a lot of parents and guardians who are lawyers, doctors, they have masters. I already have people who want to be in this committee, who are actually lawyers and teachers, so they do have some degrees. I don't think you should diminish the quality of being a parent and how much talent it takes to raise a child to being amateurs. You're, you make it seem like in order to be worthy to have an opinion over a child's book, you have to have a degree. People like me are just as worthy of having an opinion and common sense. This reminds me of your argument with voter ID, where you said people of color or marginalized communities were pretty much too ignorant to get an ID. Or when you were stating over here that we were looking for an appointment for Tito Ortiz, that you said you didn't really want elderly people in boards and committees for a reason. So you don't have, you don't hold elderly people in favor, you don't hold people of color or people who are raised in poor communities in favor, and now you're saying parents are just amateurs and the fact that you're a parent shouldn't qualify you. It seems insulting. When I read this, I couldn't believe you actually put this in writing. Parents dedicate a lot of time and effort to making sure that our kids are raised properly, and it seems a little elitist that you don't think that we're as worthy as you are, because we don't have a degree. So anyway, that's all I have to say. When I read this, it kind of got me going, and yes, we are trying to bring the community. The government is running our libraries right now. So I'm not sure what you mean with say, when you say, let's keep the government out of our libraries. They're the only ones that have any control right now, so I will bring the parents in to the libraries and bring it into the equation, because they deserve to have a table at the seat. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you mind if I respond to that?
Okay, you're shouting out, please, thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you, would you allow me to respond to the direct attacks you made on my comments I published in the paper?
The ones that are right here?
Correct.
Okay, go for it.
So you said some interesting things, right? And you put a lot of words into my mouth.
They're right here.
No, 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 about things I said in the past. So I think there's like a, a discrepancy between someone's opinion versus someone's expertise, and this, I think, is a, a larger systemic issue of equating someone's expertise and someone's opinion. Amateurism versus professionalism is a defined term. So when I say that amateurs are on this board, we set no criteria, no base level for someone that understands what a library collection looks like, and I don't presume to know what a library collection looks like. We have paid librarians who go to school to understand library science. They literally call it library science because it's complicated and it's not just something that someone's opinion could help fill a library with. That's what I mean when I mean amateur. It's not to be, it's not to denigrate someone's opinion, it's to quantify someone's expertise. And that's what I mean with regard to that. When we talked about, we're going to bring up something that I said when we were appointing Tito's replacement, when I, we had just had a eight-month-long conversation about the age of both people running for president in 2020, and that was the reference that I was making. And with regard to voter ID, I was quoting statistical analysis in states that showed that folks that don't have, I was equating data. Data, it wasn't my opinion, it was the data that was being referenced. And so to call out that I'm trying to denigrate parents, and I'm a parent of two children, I know how hard being a parent is, I've got a one-year-old and a four-year-old, and a full-time job, and this full-time volunteer job. This is, parenting is very difficult, but being a parent, I don't believe qualifies me to decide what books are in our library, just because I have kids. I have my own set of beliefs, I have my own belief on what I should, how I should raise my child and what they should understand. But when we say libertarianism in regard to controlling our library, yes, it is a public library that is owned by the government. The policies are set by bureaucrats, or the, the direct impact on the library is set by bureaucrats, or, which is basically employees of the city. When I mean keeping the government out of the library, it means keeping government politicians, it means keeping politics out of the library, because the librarians are professionals who are following an objective set of standards. So that's what I mean when I talk about an expertise versus someone's opinion, amateurism versus professionalism. It has nothing to do with a direct attack on someone's person, it's speaking more towards the definitions of those terms with regard to that. So I'm not trying to be elitist, I'm trying to be real when we have a professional system and a world-class library to introduce, when I say amateurs, folks that are not trained in library science, to introduce how we're going to choose what, what our collection looks like, and that, and that means it's not to be deleterious to anyone who would want to serve on this committee, it's just that, it's, again, it's opinion versus expertise. And so that was the clarification of those comments.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the recommended action.
I'll second.
With no amendments?
Nope.
Before you proceed, then, even if it's not in here, do you think that it makes sense to have these meetings be publicly broadcast and like our planning commissioner or council meetings?
I believe, I believe all our committees are open to public.
Open to public and publicly live broadcasted. They're not all live broadcasted.
Okay.
It could be open to the public.
Yeah, that's fine.
Live broadcasted and recorded video, just like our planning commission meeting, because this is a, because it's unappeal, non-appellable, I think it's really important that it happen live, that's happening at that time.
I'll leave it to the author, but I think it should be public, as every one of our meetings are public.
That wasn't necessarily the opinion when we started this, right? Because it was, I asked during the initial formation of this, and I was told, no, it's not going to be a Brown Act board. It wasn't going to be open to the public. It has to be legally, but.
It is now.
The original intent was for it not to be, because I asked the question during the.
That's why we go through this process. Yeah, it is now. That's why we go through the process, it is now.
But the intent was.
So I move the recommended action.
Please call the vote.
Councilmember Mosher?
No.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Kelmick?
No.
Fails 4-3. I'd like to read for the record the title of ordinance number 4318, an ordinance of the city council.
Pass. You said a fail 4-3.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pass 4-3.
I'm sorry it's late. I apologize. I apologize. It passes 4-3, and I'd like to read for the record the title of ordinance number 4318, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Huntington Beach amending the Huntington Beach Municipal Code by adding new chapter 2.66 entitled Community Parent Guardian Review Board for Procurement of Children's Library Materials. My apologies for the mistake.
Thank you. Moving on to council member items, item number 25, Councilmember McKeon, please introduce your report.
All right, let's wrap this up. So the League of California Cities has repeatedly failed in its mission to advocate for cities, and instead advocates for more and higher taxes and Sacramento's agenda over our own. They fought hard against the gas tax repeal, and they have now supported Proposition 1, knowing that the buy right sober living home requirements in residential neighborhoods will now be supercharged by a multi-billion dollar bond measure. The ballot bond measure also creates more state debt and diverts funding away from county-administered mental health programs to allow for buy right, i.e. cities have no discretion or ability to regulate mental health and substance abuse treatment facilities on any property zone for multifamily, office, or parking. Cal Cities is also fighting aggressively against the Taxpayer Protection Act pushed by the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, calling it deceptive and worse. Several cities signed on to an amicus brief to make sure the Taxpayer Protection Act gets in front of voters, instead of getting knocked off the ballot by the governor and the state legislature, as they are attempting to do, which prevents the opportunity for Californians to vote on the Taxpayer Protection Act. Then to have the League of Cities call those efforts to allow Californians to vote deceptive and misleading is beyond disappointing. The crux of the issue is their stance on Prop 1, which in my opinion is unforgivable. The League of Cities knew Prop 1 was bad for cities, and the reason we know that is because on December 6, 23, 2023, they issued a press release saying Cal City supports Prop 1 and maintained support for most of the year, but last-minute amendments made to Prop 1 before the end of the legislative year generated concerns among cities, and as a result, Cal Cities withdrew their support. But then the Cal Cities Board decided to override their withdrawal of support and continue to support Prop 1. The current vote count as of this morning, and yes, they are still counting votes, is that the yes position is up by 19,617 votes. It's only up by 19,617 votes out of 7 million votes cast. Election results illustrate that a majority of voters in Orange County and almost half of the voters in the state did not want Prop 1 to pass. If Cal Cities had maintained their withdrawal of support and not been overridden by their board, they could have most likely had an impact in defeating Prop 1. This is unforgivable, and we cannot continue sending tax dollars to an organization that hurt us this badly. We can no longer be part of an organization that's supposed to be advocating for us and did the exact opposite in such a high-profile way. Our neighbor, the city of Newport Beach, voted last week on March 12 to not renew their membership in the California League of Cities, and Huntington Beach had followed suit and joined our neighbors in sending a message to California League of Cities that we will no longer support an organization that would no only harm our cities like Prop 1 has done and further remove our local control. Now, Councilmember Calmick, based on your most recent email you sent out to the community with falsehoods used to sow division, fear, and confusion, you will argue that we shouldn't leave Cal Cities because you agree with their positions not to repeal the gas tax and to not support the Taxpayer Protection Act because you are for these taxes, as you say, to quote, "fund our city." And that's the difference between us. I would like to create a robust economy through private enterprise by streamlining our city to make it attractive for businesses to invest here, create jobs, and in turn produce sales tax revenue through the services they provide. And you, on the other hand, want to create revenue by the government taxing our residents and consumers. You were even quoted in the press saying, and I quote, "As a tourist community, I want to shake every tourist upside down by their ankles to get money out of them," end quote. We may disagree in how to fund our city, but we should all agree that Cal City's support of Prop 1 that supercharges buy rights sober living homes in our community is unforgivable. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to request that the city manager direct staff and negotiate with the League of California Cities for the reimbursement of 2024 dues and withdraw membership for 2024 and our membership for future years. Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I have some questions.
Councilmember Calmick.
So that investment by businesses in our community, how does that turn into paving roads?
I just said, I understand you're pro-tax, I get it.
No, 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 I'm asking you, how, how do you pave roads in our city by businesses investing in our community?
These are ancillary items to my agenda, they're examples of their pro-tax stance, their, their efforts to thwart the will of voters, to put the Taxpayer Protection Act on the ballot, and the main issues are support for Prop 1. In your, in your email you sent out, which I just called out, you're going to say that you're for pro-tax. You, you want revenue to be generated by the government, by taxing residents and consumers.
How do you pave for paying roads, paving roads in this city by businesses investing in the community?
Again, I understand that.
Simple question.
Sure, I understand your question.
You tax them on their sales of goods, or we tax the hotels, or we tax the property. That's how we generate revenue in the city. We pay, we get $5 million for gas tax. California has a really weird tax system. I'm sure Councilmember Strickland understands the complex system that we have in taxes because we've limited our property tax revenue. In order to fund a enormous state with hundreds of miles, millions of lane miles of roads, the gas tax, because you brought it up specifically in your item, and you brought up the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, both of those things directly affect how this city can fund its basic needs. We can fund, I think it's like 32 lane miles over the last five fiscal years, 32 lane miles, that's 32 miles of lanes in this city from the gas tax. And if we had not, if the gas tax had not gone through, or the gas tax repeal had gone through, we would be trying to find other sources to be able to pave those roads. The Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act could drastically affect how we fund our city. Now, personally, your personal taxing views and the way that your public policy views are on taxation, I think are, can be disparate. I don't think that they are necessarily the same. I'm not saying that I'm pro-tax, I'm saying that the way I understand how our city generates revenue is through taxes and fees for service. We have very few fees for service, it's a very small percentage of our budget. Most of it comes from property tax, and then sales tax, and then hotel tax. How we do some of our projects are through other taxes and fees. Now, if we, if the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act were to pass, my understanding is this, it's very nebulous, and the minimum fees charged could decimate our budget because of the way it's interpreted. We may not be able to raise parking fees, for instance, on 4th of July and for the air show. We may not be able to assess the amount of time it actually takes our planners to do plan check, and we'd have to assess the minimum amount of time it takes for someone to do a plan check, not all plan checks. And now we're subsidizing private entity on the backs of that. So again, Cal Cities, if Prop 1, you know, Prop 1's quite complicated, I don't think anyone understands what the actual implementation's going to be. You, in your item, I think it's probably a typo, you said that knowingly harm our cities like Prop position 1 has done, I think you meant could potentially do.
Obviously.
I'll give you the benefit of the doubt on that.
Thank you.
But I think leaving Cal Cities, especially leaving money on the table, like since we've already paid our dues, like why not table this until December? Because I knew Newport Beach had this conversation December before they paid their dues, so they're not asking for money back. There's no, there's no guarantee we get our money back from, from them. So why not stay a member and then table this for December?
I'll answer why I don't want to do that, because I want to send a message that they should have been on board with Prop 1 in the first place, because it does limit our ability at the local government. Their job is to represent us at the local government, not to represent Gavin Newsom. And so the other part, you mentioned in terms of gas tax, I know all about the gas tax. In fact, most of that money was sold to the people, saying that the money's going to go for road maintenance and road highways for a long period of time, it just went to the general fund. I actually was the author of the initiative that moved it to transportation. However, the money's not even going to road maintenance and road construction. Most of that gas tax money is going to mass transit, to masses that people don't use, and it's also going to the bullet train. You know, how many millions and millions of dollars have we wasted in California doing the bullet train? So this initiative wouldn't be going forward if they actually spent the money wisely. And really, what's happening right now is overspending in Sacramento. When I left Sacramento less than, about 10 years ago, the whole budget was $98 billion. It's quadrupled in 10 years, and we're about to have $100 billion deficit. That was, we, we spent $98 billion for the whole budget, less than, about 10 years ago. So the reason why we need to do this is we join Newport Beach, and I'm hoping other cities push back, because they won't change their behavior and they won't fight for us if they don't listen to us. They're listening to the governor and the governor's priorities, not our city's priorities. That's why we need to withdraw.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so the first time I heard about this was Wednesday when the agenda came out. So my question is, how much thought was put into this before it was proposed? Because what are we going to do now? So Cal Cities is like a trade association, it represents all cities, hundreds of bills go through the state legislature every year, and, you know, just put aside the regulatory agencies and all that stuff. So how are we going to monitor all of the stuff that goes on, all of it, in the absence of Cal Cities, which does a lot of the work for cities to understand, you know, all of these complicated bills and stuff like that?
One, that's a assumption that they've been representing us, and, and quite frankly, what we're talking about is they're not representing us. So yeah, we'll save $35,000 a year, and hopefully they change their tactics, and if they do change their tactics and start representing local government, then we could rejoin.
Did we have a conversation with Cal Cities about these specific concerns, about Prop 1 and about the Business Roundtable ballot measure before?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So you did have a conversation?
On Prop 1, yeah. I did talk to the city representative about Prop 1.
But what about this, because this?
And actually, when we went up with the ACCOC, about what was that? That was last year, when they were talking about their number one priority, we pushed back, along with Will O'Neill, who was a councilman from Newport Beach, we pushed back saying that should not be your top priority. We've expressed that in these meetings.
Okay, but, and the Howard Jarvis thing, are you?
No, we specifically talked about that, that should not be your number one priority. And they stated that that was their number one priority for the cities.
So we're not going to agree with anybody 100%, but based on this, that, just, this is my understanding of what you're saying, we're going to drop our membership. They do explanations of bills, you know, analysis and stuff like that, it's all posted online. I find it enormously helpful. It's not just a matter of lobbying, but it's all the stuff, you know, that they provide to help us understand what we need to in order to figure out what kind of position the city should take, or, you know, what's in our interest or what's not in our interest. So with respect to the Howard Jarvis thing, has anybody read that? Has anybody read that ballot measure all the way through? Because to say that it takes away local control, that's just, I don't agree with the analysis that's in there.
I said Prop 1 takes away local control, that's what I said.
Well, no, I'm talking about the Howard Jarvis thing.
Sure, I use it as an example, along with their pushback against repealing the gas tax, it's just their overall tone of, you know, supporting Sacramento's agenda over our own, but also being pro and more tax. And the Howard Jarvis example is that them and the, they and the legislator actually, and the governor are trying to get that removed from the ballot, so that voters can't even vote on it. And then when the League of Cities, with the proponents of Howard Jarvis pushing back, they're calling the efforts by the Howard Jarvis group deceptive and misleading. And that's, they're again attacking our residents, attacking our constituents, that just want to put it on the ballot for a vote. And so they're just attacking democracy and calling those efforts deceptive and misleading. Again, that's beyond disappointing. It's their overall tone, their behavior needs to change. And the only way to change is our control over the purse, because we pay $40,000 a year, and Newport just pulled out, and I agree with their reasons, and I think we should do the same.
So two points. With the Howard Jarvis ballot measure, my understanding from reading the actual text of the ballot measure is, it is correct that it will severely restrict the city's ability to set our fees. And that includes the emergency response fees that I asked the CFO about earlier, which amount to $7 million, and allow us to defray the cost of supplies that we need to put in ambulances, parking, bid fees, tourism fees, that means the TOT. So that's part of what's going to happen with that, and I don't understand why any city would support those changes in the framework that governs how cities set fees. So, I mean, you know.
Again, again, that's not the crux of the issue why I brought that up. I said several cities signed on to an amicus brief to make sure that the Taxpayer Protection Act gets in front of the voters, instead of the efforts right now to get it knocked off the ballot by the governor and the state legislature.
Why are they trying to get it knocked off the ballot?
And the League of Cities called those efforts on the amicus, amicus brief deceptive and misleading. So again, they don't even want it going on the ballot. We can, we can argue about the merits of this measure, but at least put it on the ballot for the voters to decide, and Cal Cities is trying to prevent that. That's unacceptable.
It's on the ballot.
I understand, but they're, they're calling those efforts misleading.
Why are they trying, why is the governor and the state legislature trying to have it kicked off the ballot?
I mean, it doesn't matter.
It does, it absolutely, it absolutely.
You're removing the will of the voters.
No, no, it absolutely matters why they're trying to get it kicked off the ballot. Why are they trying to get it kicked off the ballot?
Because cities don't want it.
No, no, they're trying, they're arguing on the constitutional basis, that, just the same, under the same argument that the ballot initiative that wanted to split the state into three, because it's something that drastically changes this, the California Constitution, and the California Constitution is, states that only the legislature can make radical changes, propose those to the voters.
That's incorrect, because we, Prop 13 was a ballot initiative that went forward that drastically changed, and it became state law, so that's incorrect.
No, no, but this changes the way, I mean, yeah, sure.
That's incorrect, that's an incorrect statement.
But that's the argument they're making, though.
I know, but it's an incorrect statement.
I mean, it's not incorrect until a judge adjudicates it, right? As of right now, it's a viable argument.
Well, right now, we live in under Prop 13?
We are.
Okay, and was that a dramatic thing that was done by the voters?
Sure.
So, again.
But, as of right now.
Anybody can sue over anything, but they won't win.
Okay, well, we'll have each other a steak dinner on that one.
Okay, I'll, I'll be happy to do that. You name the place. Anyways, it's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
I didn't get to talk, and you're not the mayor. Sorry, I'm so confused. That's okay. No, as one of the division board members for the League of Cities, I, number one, just wanted to say that I get to, we are brought together with Connor, who's here, and I appreciate him taking the time tonight to be here and also providing us with a very detailed explanation of many of the benefits that the League of Cities membership provides and the value that it provides. When we are able to come together as various cities, I get to understand their different perspectives on various bills, different issues, they get to understand ours. The primary thing that we have discussed is trying to retain local control, also trying to make sure that anything that is mandated and coming down from the state, that we are, they are trying to get funding for those things, so that it's not just being hoisted on to cities. So it's, it's funny, because so many of the things that this council talks about are the things that the League is trying to do and has been doing. The League has also, as mentioned in the report provided, has provided a lot, a very high ROI to the city, because it's also working to make sure that, for instance, during COVID-19, it says that advocacy is integral to maintaining our city's fiscal responsibility and economic development, especially in challenging times like COVID-19, where the League facilitated access to CARES Act and American Rescue Plan funding. There were so many different times that the city, or that the League of Cities, has advocated, has worked together, not just as one city, but working together as many cities to have a bigger voice at the state level. And we're not going to always agree with every proposal, but to say, you know, "I don't like the way you're doing this, so we're going to teach you a lesson," that's going to teach us a lesson, because our voice is going to be limited and minimized. It's not okay to throw the baby out with the bathwater. You might disagree with the way that they approached Prop 1, that's fine, that doesn't mean that everything leaves. There is also training that's provided, not just to council members, but to staff. And I don't know who else is going to be providing that type of training. Have, have you looked into that?
To me, again, their, their position on Prop 1.
Right, but have you looked into the training provided? Right, but have you looked into the training provided by staff?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, it's unforgivable. They knew it was bad for cities, they withdrew their support based on amendments, their board overwrote it. It's only up by 19,000 votes out of 7 million. Sober living homes is one of the biggest issues our community faces, that they're concerned about, that dissipate, decimate neighborhoods, not allowed in multifamily commercial parking, and they supported that, knowing it was bad for cities. It's unforgivable, I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry, but they have specifically been fighting for us with sober living homes. So that's just wrong as well. I, I, okay, I mean, you're looking at one particular thing that you disagree with and are stomping your feet and saying, we're out. And you're not considering other ramifications, like, and I think that you should, we should, if the staff is presented with training, and there perhaps are not other places where they're able to get that, you know, if you get new council members coming next November, what type of training? Did you go to the League of Cities training?
Can non-members go to that training?
I don't believe so, but I'm not sure.
ACCOC might be another option that we could do, there's, there's other options.
They provide training to staff and city managers.
I'm sure there's other options out there.
But we don't know. So, so one other thing with this, then, I think is important, is that at least with Newport, they, they did it in a way that asked for public input, they had a study session, they had a longer conversation about it. I, I would make a substitute motion to table this for right now, until perhaps the next meeting, allow for more conversation, allow the staff to see what other, what other opportunities there might be for training or things like that, what other ramifications there might be to our removal from this. There's no urgency, we've already spent the money. We don't know that we're going to get the money back, by the way. So why not take a moment, table it, find a lot, a little bit more information, you can always come back and get to the same point, should you choose to. But as Newport Beach did, they did not just come up with an agenda item and just get rid of it, again, after they've already paid, like we already have.
So, so we paid on January 25, so it's a little less than two months, I would imagine they'll reimburse us or provide us shares, because I would imagine they don't want a public dispute over our membership dues. And very, I'm very satisfied with Newport's reasoning, you know, talking to the mayor, Will O'Neill, I totally agree with his sentiment. It, again, for me, it's simple, their support of Prop 1 is unforgivable. By the way, there's other cities talking about it right now. Yeah.
Oh, that, I'm, I'm sure there are, as Huntington Beach goes, you know, it bleeds into other areas, but I, I think that it does. But I think that it's important that we slow down, consider the different impacts. And the other thing is, you know, as far as, you know, you're sure that they'll give us the money back, why wouldn't they? Why would they want to have this? You know, I don't know, I don't know that, because the thing is, is there should perhaps be a consequence to an entity that essentially went into a contract to have contracted services and be a member of something for the year. So I would imagine they might not say you can have the money back. And what do we just pull out anyway and stomp our feet? Or do we find out a little bit more information first? And then you can always land in the same place, there is no urgency to this.
I disagree.
Can I, can I ask, did you have any say? Like, did you participate in any conversations about Prop 1? You were on a board, right?
We didn't make a vote about.
Hey, you guys, okay, that's what I was.
So I make a substitute motion that we table the item and get more information, and then bring it back at the next council meeting.
Second, because I don't think we have enough information, I'm very reluctant to do this with the amount of information that we have right now.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Let's take a vote. All right, Councilmember Mosher?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKeon?
No.
Calmick?
Aye.
All right, the motion fails.
Original motion.